I'd like to call the meeting to order on the nineteenth of December. Can we rise the pledge?
Yes, I just wanted to say quickly that we have the pledge led by wonderful high school sophomore Samantha Mason, Manson, I'm sorry. She recently was a Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar attendee. And Hobie's State Leadership Seminar empowers high school sophomores to develop their leadership talents to become leaders of their community. One sophomore from Sandborne is chosen to attend Hobie based on teacher nominations and a written essay about the qualities of a good leader. The SRHS School Counseling Department chose Samantha as this year's attendee. She doesn't want to say the pledge alone, so I'm going to stay up here with her. Ready?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Uh, no, we don't do that.
Oh. Okay. I believe the manifest is working its way around. It's way back, good, alright. Minutes, any?
Please accept as printed.
Second. That's Ellie and Jim. Discussion?
I have one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, discussion, here we go.
And we had a 1.5% unexpended surplus this fall, should we, and we had a 1.5 million unexpended surplus this fall.
Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, manifest working over here. Any reservation, nomination?
None.
And superintendent's report, we have two, four, five items?
Actually, I'm going to limit a couple of those. I just wanted to quickly mention a couple of things before we have a budget conversation this evening. The first is that recently the New Hampshire Department of Education released the figures for cost per pupil for high schools or for districts. And I looked very closely at the cost per pupil for high school because there's been a lot of questions about our cost per pupil at the high school level. And I wanted to note that out of seventy-three districts, we are fortieth in our cost per pupil for high school. At, Michelle, you know, seventeen thousand, two hundred and some odd dollars per pupil. The point is, is that we, we're right hovering around the fiftieth percent, you know, the middle on our cost per pupil. Some districts were spending thirty-nine thousand dollars a student, and of course, those tend to be very small districts. And some of the larger districts get a way greater economy of scale. And those districts tend to have a lower cost per pupil. So again, with declining student enrollments, our cost per pupil increases. And so that continues to be a conversation that we need to have. And I just wanted to kind of, you know, preface this whole thing by saying that, you know, we're going to have a conversation about the budget this evening. And it's really important to recognize that our community needs to have a, we need to come together as a community in the sense that we all need to recognize that running five campuses for sixteen hundred students is not, it's not feasible. There's a point where it's a diminishing return, that the money is going into running five campuses instead of going into helping students learn. So I will continue throughout all of my conversations with everyone to just remind everyone that, in my opinion, after eighteen months of being here and extensive research and study, talking to hundreds of people for hundreds of hours, the problem with our school district is that we are running five campuses with sixteen hundred students, and we have no academic intervention prior to special education referral. We have very little. We have two paras at each school. Most schools the size of our district and the number of students that we have would have many, many more. And I've said that repeatedly from the time that I presented my needs assessment last year. I feel that we as a district need to continue to focus on reallocating those resources and working toward the goal of getting our resources focused on student learning, not running five facilities. So I continue to affirm that the admin team is working really hard right now because their part in this budget process has started to come to a close. It's our job now. So they are working really hard on figuring out the pros and cons of moving the seventh grade and eighth grade to the high school facility. They have done a tremendous amount of work over the last two weeks. And I have asked them to really amp this up with the hopes that we can have a few consecutive board meetings coming right up in January, February, and if necessary, early March, where we, you hear the proposal at one meeting of what the board, of what the administration has come up with. The second meeting, you hear from, you'll be able to deliberate and have public comment, kind of similar to what we did in September, but now the plan is clear. And then at the third meeting, you'll deliberate about the decision and what to do. That's the process that I'm suggesting to you, but I will ask Chair Roderick to put that on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can have a conversation about that process as a team. I'm just suggesting for you to think about over the holiday break, that I'm kind of thinking a three-meeting process to kind of give everyone the information, give them time to digest it and ask questions at the second meeting. And at the third meeting, the board can deliberate about what to do. Two really important things to note is that, I just wanted to give you a preview. It has come to light that the sixth grade students, should they be at the elementary schools, they cannot participate in middle school sports, per the New Hampshire sports rules, not our rules. So they would have to participate in intramural sports at the fifth and sixth grade level. Second thing to note is that the cost to create a bathroom in the building and to create an area that would create an office for the middle school office staff is about a hundred thousand dollars one-time expense. So those are just two things that are kind of in the hopper. I just wanted to kind of let everyone know that Mr. Stack, Mr. Rutherford, myself, the two elementary principals, Steve Riley, Michelle Croto, we created an administrative subcommittee to take that work on so that we don't burden the rest of the admin team with long meetings about this. And we have scheduled two, one four- or five-hour meeting and one full-day meeting right after break to try to just really knock this out and get it ready for you. Because in my mind, there's multiple phases that need to occur. The first phase is we need to address what's going on at the middle school. The second phase is to then have a conversation about the Articles of Agreement and whether or not we can potentially reorganize the elementary schools. Because the reality is, is that as our population continues to shrink, if we don't do some reorganization in anticipation of that, we're going to continue to be burdened with a high cost per pupil without the outcomes that we'd like to see for the money that's being expended. So my plan is to get through this process, have the middle school part figured out, and then present to you kind of a four- or five-year plan of each problem to address as we go. Right? I mean, folks are asking, we'd like to talk about the twenty-eight graduate credits of graduation at the high school. Not a problem, we just need to do that in time. And I think that what the, the other things that folks are asking about that they want to know about is class sizes and student-teacher ratios. We had two significant presentations from administration this fall about rating, class sizes, and the graduation requirements at the high school. My feeling as the superintendent is that those are important issues that need to be discussed in the future. I need to keep everybody focused on the goal right now, which is to pass this budget, pass the teachers' contracts, and deal with the middle school. Once that's set up, let's go, right, next phase. Phase two, in my mind, is the elementary schools and what to do with that. And phase three is then to take the resources that we've saved while we've looked at all of these things and use those to provide that critical intervention to the students that need to help improve our student data. So that's kind of the way I'm looking at things. And I just wanted to give you a preview of kind of what I'm thinking. I do think that the absence of some kind of document that's a five-year plan makes it hard because we all want to get to everything all at once. So I will provide a five-year plan to all of you to approve or deny or twist or change, but I'll give you something to respond to soon so that we have a plan for all of these things that are very important. I just need to say that I've never seen a group of people work harder in my life than our admin team this last three weeks. And I very much applaud them, but they are burning the candle at both ends. So my hope is that we'll get the middle school piece. At least we'll be able to tell you what the pros and cons are so that you can make a decision, and then we can get on to the other stuff. It's all amazing stuff. I just wanted to also mention that at the January ninth meeting, I'll place on the agenda, or ask Chair Roderick to place on the agenda, the NHSBA Delegate Assembly Conversation because we should have someone go to that. We did not do that last year. And so I could send you the documents to read to understand that process and what it is. And Phyllis, if we could share those tomorrow with the board. I felt like I had enough to read for tonight, so it's not until the ninth, so y'all have plenty of time to talk about it. And other than that, the rest of the information that I have for you will be presented throughout the budget process this evening. Oh, those are all kind of in there, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Committee reports, policy.
Policy meets on January ninth at four forty-five in EISA U Office, and we have some policies to review tonight.
Oh, we have a lot of J policies ready. So just get your reading hats on because after break, you're going to get a lot of policies about students to read. So I'm going to have Phyllis try to share them with Pam over the next two days so that she can kind of read them and get them ready for the committee. But I just want you all to know that we, the admin team has also read a large number of J policies and done a great job on that.
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met earlier this evening. I'm going to recap the meeting at our next board meeting because we just talked about a lot of stuff. But our next EISA meeting is on January twenty-third.
What time is that, you know?
It's at four thirty, excuse me.
Facilities?
Facilities has not met since our last board meeting. Our next facilities meeting is January ninth at three forty-five PM.
Finance?
The finance committee met on December twelfth. The committee members present were Tammy Mahoney, Elektra Alessio, and Jim Baker, and Business Administrator Michelle Croto, along with Assistant Kristen McNulty. The minutes from our fourteenth meeting were reviewed and approved. The business administrator updated the committee on various fund balances. The total of the balances as of November thirtieth are five hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. We reviewed budget expense reports from July through November thirtieth. The health and dental expenses for the period are one million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And the general fund expenses excluding health and dental are ten million, three hundred thirty thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. And again, that's July first through November thirtieth. We also reviewed and approved balance transfers from the general fund to specific accounts, and also transfers among several accounts. The total of the fund transferred reviewed was a hundred thirty thousand, forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. The business administrator reviewed the timeline and formula involved in state of New Hampshire special ed expense reimbursements. The estimated amount of the state reimbursement for the coming budget is two hundred thousand. The reimbursement is only a percent of the actual costs and could be higher or lower depending on formulaic decisions by the state. Budgeting in general, as we all know, is a best guess exercise. State formula adjustments along with uncertain enrollments make budgeting for special educations cost particularly challenging. The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for January sixteenth at four thirty PM.
The Public Relations Committee met on December twelfth. In attendance were myself, Mrs. Alessio, Mr. Mason attended remotely, and Superintendent Ambrose. The seminary hearing held at the December fifth board meeting was discussed. Although the attendees were informed that the negotiations have not progressed enough for a warrant article in March, good feedback was nonetheless received from the community. Mr. Ambrose will communicate the latest status via email and a news article after the first of the year. The committee's next focus will be on the budget and staffing contracts. Mr. Ambrose hopes to present a unified message and suggested producing videos which present the budget priorities in relation to the needs analysis he previously presented. Mr. Mason suggested that the committee's goal over the next three months should be to release information about the budget and why the boards hopefully unanimously endorse the budget and contracts as they are aligned to the district goals and Sandborne's definition of success. Mrs. Alessio stressed the importance of getting the message to voters age fifty and over. Mr. Ambrose would like to circulate a survey to synthesize the community's questions and then convene a public forum at the second January board meeting. There was also some discussion on an announcement for Mr. Ambrose's recent contract extension. Mr. Ambrose will draft a press release. Next meeting is on January thirtieth at five thirty.
Personal?
Personal hasn't met in a while. There is no meeting currently scheduled at this point.
You have a schedule for the next one?
I do not, sir.
SST?
The SST Governing Board had engaged on Monday, December seventeenth at four thirty at the Forty Linden Street Address of the Seacoal School of Technology. There were two key topics of discussion. I'm not sure if you all know or if you've heard, but Principal Callahan, the SST principal, is retiring after fourteen years of providing exceptional services to our students. During that meeting, we went ahead and went through a few what exercises. What do we want in a principal? What do we expect out of the next principal? What are the things and qualities that we look in for in a new principal? It was very challenging because quite frankly, Margaret Callahan, Principal Margaret Callahan has set the bar exceptionally high. The other core topic of discussion was actually the Articles of Agreement or the actual policies for the SST. We ultimately have a few different discussion points that we're talking about, sped pricing, and just again, just many different factors. Regardless, ultimately, we're going to wait till the next principal comes in because a budget's already been set for this upcoming year. It's not the time to be reviewing those documents. And we're going to wait for the next principal to come in and furthermore, go ahead and review the, they're going to have some review of the policies and procedures in the next coming year. One other comment, going back to Principal Callahan, there is a search committee that's been formed of five different members throughout the community that's sending students. There are three principals and two board members. Sandborne is not participating in that right now, just so you know. There's just some reasons for that, but, you know, Exeter is heavy-handed in that for good reasons. Questions for me? Otherwise, our next meeting is Monday, January twenty-eighth at four thirty PM at the SST.
It's important to note that the SST, as an HR person that's heading the search. Good point. They got a handle on it. I mean, we're going to, the board reviews all the candidates, so it's not as if we're not going to have input before candidate's chosen.
Seminary.
Nothing to report at this time. He looked at you, but I answered.
I'm just not sure which hat I'm wearing, so.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Larry, if you notice, we've got you with six-one-two, but is there anything you want to preempt us on?
Well, we just had a meeting here last Thursday, right? Yeah. And we will be discussing things again today. Two weeks ago, alright. Time goes too fast.
Adam, how you doing?
I'm doing great.
Alright, you're up.
Alright, so a little update from each class. The freshmen are working on their winter carnival, winter carnival, and they're designing their t-shirts. Sophomores are also working on winter carnival, and they are working on the community slash staff calendar for the two thousand nineteen year. The juniors are doing a Pure Vita bracelet fundraiser with the school colors, and they're also working on winter carnival. The seniors are planning the winter semi. It's going to be at the Austin Seventeen House again this year. We've also been working on a senior trip through the PTO, and it'll be a cruise night in Boston. Twelve Days of Carrying, I just reached up, sorry. So Twelve Days of Carrying, we've reached out and heard back from the other schools in the district to give donations. We finish up on December fifteenth. I mean, we got a really good amount of donations that's going to be donated to a bunch of local and state stuff like Food Pantries and Sixty-Eight Hours of Hunger, Toys for Tots, NHSPCA, and a couple more. So for winter carnival, this year we decided to do a canned food drive instead of a penny war, and the canned food will be donated. And tomorrow, actually, we are doing the tacky sweater day. Yeah. So there's going to be prizes. It's going to be entered into a raffle just like the Halloween costume contest.
Grownups get to get entered for prizes and have tacky sweaters, or is that kid-only?
I think it's kid-only, but it's encouraged for adults to.
It's okay, you just save me a trip to Walmart on the way home. I'd have to pick up a tacky sweater, but it sounded fun. I might wear one anyway.
I'm sure one can be arranged.
Pete's a hipster, he's giving me feedback on my clothing.
Okay, we are actually seven minutes early. And that's good because the budget committee's going to want to be seated. So why don't you come on down, you're the next contestant, and the prize is right.
Well, the budget committee is setting. How about if I give you the results that the budget committee came up with? We'll have the number that they agreed to.
Sounds good to me. So that's going to be your six-one-two?
Yes.
Yeah.
The budget committee voted two weeks ago Thursday. Excuse me. They voted to approve a budget of thirty-five million, seven hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars and zero cents. So I will now turn it over to the chair.
Could you repeat that number, Larry?
The number that was approved was thirty-five thou, thirty-five million, seven hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Zero cents.
Which is a, a decrease of, oh, seven, eight hundred thousand?
Two hundred, two seventy-five, something like that.
Two point seven five?
No, two hundred seventy, no, not two point. So.
I'm not going to ask for recess. I know technically this is their meeting, but unless everybody has a problem, we want to reset.
Well, I think for the first part, we were going to stay in the meeting while I explain.
Well, no, no, we're going to stay.
And then they're going to, yeah.
But technically, it's their meeting.
Yeah.
So I'd like to call the budget committee meeting to order. I'd like to report that Sandy Rogers Osterloh is currently out of the country, so she is excused from this meeting. And I believe that Cheryl Gannon will be here, but she's not here yet, and we are still talking this early. So hopefully, we won't get to, we won't have Mr. Ambrose start until she's able to attend or we get on time. Briefly, I'd like to say that the purpose that this meeting was established in our process very early on when we set up and approved, both the school board and the budget committee approved a calendar. And the purpose is to see if there are any unanswered questions, any things that each committee has, have a chance to talk together, to see if there's some ways to find some common ground on a budget. The, I'd like to start off, if I could, with taking a motion to accept the minutes of our last meeting, which I believe is December sixth, was it not? I have a motion? Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nice job, Jim.
Nice job.
I'd like to point out that, before we take a vote, that the budget committee does not have a recording secretary at this point. And so we, as a committee, have been taking turns, each of us doing the minutes, which is kind of a double duty where you're trying to be a part of a, part of a group and also take minutes. And everybody so far has done a really good job, and I assume that that will continue throughout our process. Yes?
One question, only because it's not in the minutes. Mr. Kozak, you were in the initial roundtable discussion. You made a comment, and I didn't print out the minutes. This presently five little question marks in a row?
Oh, yes.
Next to his.
Yeah.
If you do, would you please let somebody know because?
He doesn't remember where he was this afternoon.
He was at work.
Were you?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes is written, please say that. Okay, that's, and Charlton, you're abstaining, having not been there?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, Larry, you're, okay, so that's five in favor, one abstention, and two currently absent. I'd suggest that we ask Mr. Ambrose to start his presentation on some of the questions that were raised. Yes, Larry?
Adam, chair, before we get started, it seems that I have a little bit of a high number. Actually, a low number. The actual number that we came out with was thirty-five million, eight hundred seventeen thousand, which is a little bit higher, nine hundred and thirty-three.
Okay.
And I think the reason was because we went out of that last quarter, two thousand, I think. Was that?
Ah, perfect.
Is that a true, is that a true number?
Well, this is, I have on my screen the email that Annie sent.
That's the full number is three-five-eight-one-seven-three-nine-three-three.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. Thanks for that correction. Okay. Mr. Ambrose?
So I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate y'all coming tonight to meet. And I wanted to explain that the two teaching positions that were removed in the budget are a challenge. They look on the surface like an easy spot to make a change, but the admin team did discuss those two positions at length during the budget process. And as you can see, you can pull this up. See that right here, the screen four teacher, Becky, has to go to fifth grade because there's going to be five classes of fifth grade. And so I asked, this is Principal Snyder, I think he's here tonight.
Yep.
I asked him, what about, what about the grade three going to grade four that has twelve, fifteen, and fourteen? And the problem with that group is that if you reduce a teacher and put it into the, into the, you know, make it so that there are two teachers for that grade, the whole school will open to twenty and twenty-one. And so we wouldn't have much room if more students moved in. And we don't have a policy that says that we can't do that. But I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that our policy says you can't have more than twenty-five, period. But for K-five education, for a teacher who has to work with twenty students at one time, it is very challenging to meet their needs at the elementary level when you have more than eighteen. It's just the reality of today's education. So if there's twenty and twenty-one in a room and we have a bunch of students move in, then we're kind of stuck. Right?
Can you zoom in again on that? It was going in and out, and I'm not sure I can read this.
Which end do you want?
This end, right, you're fine, yeah. So you can see right here, this group up here, grade three. Oh, ah, the way you were, you were fine. Thank you, that's perfect. So grade three would move up to grade four, so this teacher needs to move up to grade five.
So what's grade three tw, number twelve?
I thought it was thirteen. Phyllis, can you double-check that? Chris?
Alright, so class one, two.
So if you take the fourteen students here and put seven in the twelve class, you're going to have nineteen. And you put seven in this one, you're going to have twenty-two. Or twenty and twenty-one, the bottom line is that we don't have emergency funds. If five kids move into first grade, those classes are going to be twenty-three or twenty-four. So I did not elect to reduce that as part of the budget process. We discussed it at length. And then Pam, if you scroll over to the next side, like this way. Memorial, it's the same thing. This, this teacher is coming up. All the teachers have to move forward, and the prediction for Memorial for kindergarten is the same number of teachers that they currently have. So there isn't really a spot to reduce, except what I asked in the budget process is, well, there's forty-three. So there isn't really a spot to reduce, except what I asked in the budget process is will this forty-three in that one grade level? And, and again, you'd end up with twenty-one, and both of those grade levels that have slightly smaller class sizes have significant behavior problems. And the principals are really, really concerned about making those changes. Their explanations met my level of, um, I, we'll put it this way, it was at least an hour-long conversation as an admin team about what to do about this, and we came to an agreement as a team that those teachers needed to stay where they were. I wanna remind the BudCon and the board that if I had two teaching positions at the elementary level that I could remove from the budget, I would immediately allocate those resources to intervention for kids who need academic support. We need academic support, bad and district-wide. And, and so I would not reduce those even if the class sizes would, would, um, allow them to. But I didn't feel like we could do that at this time. So that explains kind of the, the reason why those two positions were still in the budget. And if, uh, both of our principals are here and they're happy to answer questions as well, so I just wanted to explain for transparency's purposes why those weren't reduced in the budget process. We look at, every time I do the budget, the first thing we start with is the numbers. We look at each grade, each class, what's moving forward, right? That's how you do it. The principals call the town halls and ask for information on the census, and they look at their pre-K numbers and try to figure out how many kids are coming into kindergarten. That is a very difficult number to, to predict. Memorial had ten, Becky had ten more this year, right, Chris? Than what was predicted. He predicted forty-one, he had fifty-one. So it's not a perfect science, and it, this again, leads me to continue to, to say that there needs to be emergency funds available in regular education so that we can tighten numbers up and know that if we got stuck somewhere, that we could go to the board and say, this is what happened, this is the number of students who moved in, we need to fund the teaching position here. Currently, we don't have those, but we'll be writing warrant articles to address those needs for this, this next year.
Thank you. Does anybody have any further comments, questions?
I, I think we're, we're looking at those numbers. I'm, I'm not sure. Who, uh, who talked about this, Cheryl? Did you?
Yes, I did, yeah.
You were going by that list there. Were we looking at the same numbers here, Cheryl?
Well, it's set up differently there than it was on the, um, the standard, uh, form that we get. And so there was one question I had. I think, Mr. Ambrose, you said that grade five would need to have five classes?
Four.
Four, okay.
So if you, if you look at grade five going on to the middle school, it's got three groups of kids. That teacher in fourth grade right now, the fourth teacher, is going up to fifth grade next year. And that still keeps classes at seventeen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Okay. Thank you.
We're right at the cusp of being able to find some efficiencies here, but our enrollments are just right on the edge. I wanna point something out. In the future, should we have the opportunity to reorganize our district so that we have pre-K to four or pre-K to three in one building and four, five, six in another, you're taking five teachers and trying to make four classes. That makes it easy to allocate a teacher to intervention or to even potentially make a reduction once the intervention programming is set up. But right now, because the grade-level teachers are set across two buildings, there's no efficiency. If you have fifteen in two classrooms at Memorial, you can't cut a position because you end up with thirty. If you have fifteen in three classrooms at, at, at Becky, and you want to reduce a position, you end up with twenty-two in a classroom. It's just right at the edge across the board, which is another reason why having a conversation about the fact that we have to have an elementary school in both communities is something that the district needs to decide as a community in the future. We are very, we are facilities-rich and intervention for academic purposes, uh, poor. So we're spending all of our money running five communities, five, five campuses for sixteen hundred kids. This is where it hits the ground, right here. It's hard.
Yeah.
By elementary school, you're talking about the state definition?
Yeah, currently, the state definition of an elementary school is kindergarten to sixth grade or first grade to sixth grade. But the reality is, is that we're bound by the article of agreement, not state law. The article of agreement says elementary school. If the article agreement just said school, then we could have a four, five, six school in one campus in a pre-K four. Or a pre-K two and a three, three through six, which would allow us to get way greater efficiency in our elementary schools. But as I said, for those of you on the BudCon who weren't here during my comments, as I said in, in my, my, um, superintendent's report, um, we need to take it one thing at a time. I need to deal with the middle school, get that squared away. But I want folks to be thinking about the fact that, uh, in my opinion, our inefficiency, our high school is fortieth out of seventy-three high schools in terms of the number, amount of money that we spend per pupil. Our issues in terms of expenditures and cost per pupil lie at pre-K to eight. And the fact that we still maintain the, the campus, another campus, too. Because the campus isn't just the seminary building, it's the whole campus. It's the gym, it's the sports complexes. I'm just saying that, that, I mean, I have personally worked in a high school that had twelve hundred students in one building. We're running five campuses, so I can't, I can't stress enough that our conversation is really about how to reallocate our resources to meet the academic needs of our kids while balancing the burden on our taxpayers. I think that our taxpayers are, are, are taxed out, sorry, I said, I shouldn't, that wasn't the right way to say that. Our, 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 our taxpayers are at the end of what they feel like they can pay because they're not seeing a return on their investment because their money's going into all these campuses instead of into the teaching and learning. That's my analysis after eighteen months of being here. And what I realized this last couple of weeks is that I need to just say it because you gotta understand that this is about helping our kids learn. When you have a K-two center for kids, you actually get a synergy between the K, K-two teachers about younger student learning. There's professional development. You have the opportunity for your child to be placed across five teachers instead of one or two. The, the, all the, all the professional development is more efficient. It's not just about saving money and facilities. It's about what's best for kids. And I wanna make sure that everyone understands that I view this as a real win-win for everyone. And if we can come together as a community to endorse what I'm, what I'm saying, then it doesn't have to be, well, I wanna save my taxes and education doesn't have to, you know, I'm not worried about that. Or it doesn't have to be, oh, the education's fine, but I'll pay the taxes. I, I really think that this is an incredibly rare instance if we can all work together where, where we can actually, over the next few years, quote, have our cake and eat it too. Which is not typical, right? I, it's, I'm very happy to be able to say that, Paula. But it's gonna mean working together because I am acutely aware that having your elementary school in Newton the way it is and in, in Kingston the way it is, that's where everyone has gone for a hundred and some odd years. Right? And so changing that is a big deal. And changing the middle school is a really big deal. And I just ask that everyone get involved and be informed as we go through the next three years because it is gonna be a little bit of a bumpy ride, but I assure you that once it's settled, everything's gonna be fine, and our kids are gonna be learning even better.
Does anybody have, yes, Jim?
I just, I look at these numbers and we discuss, you mentioned intervention people. With thirteen kids in a classroom, seems to be a number that's up there quite a bit on both sides. And you have thirteen kids, it shrunk back down.
Yeah, it did shrunk back down.
Second grade classrooms are thirteen, thirteen, and fourteen. Where's that for us? Your next grade is, you know, fourteen, fifteen, and fourteen.
Yep, and then it goes up.
With student populations like that, intervention should be able to be easily handled in the classroom.
Why do you say that?
Considering the, the amount of coding that we do with the paraprofessionals that we have, I mean, I believe that we have good qual- high-quality teachers. When I look at numbers like that, it's hard for me to go to the general public and say, oh, yes, that, that, they, they need to add additional. The, the, these numbers are not supporting the educational information that is out there.
I agree with you if you were talking numbers. Second grade students. Point of order presentation or deliberations?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I, I wasn't sure on that either because I know Jim asked a question, and when you allowed it, I, I wasn't sure which we should do, to tell you the truth.
So what is the posse's here this evening?
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
I think it's the budget committee's committee right now.
It is. Technically, the school board was supposed to recess at this point.
Yes, that's why I asked you.
And I'd be happy to answer your question, Mr. Duncan.
I just, I, I look at these numbers, and Ms. Gannon presented her version of the same, I believe that they're basically the same numbers, just in different format. And she made a very persuasive argument. You know, we're looking at a, a lot of major possible increases this year, and.
Okay, got it. Does anybody else have anything?
Questions or deliberations? We still need questions?
Well, right now, yes, we're just in questions. Were there any questions from this side?
Well, wait, wait.
We're in recess.
Gonna be clear.
We're in recess. This is a budget committee meeting.
Yes, okay, but I'm happy in the, as a budget committee chair to.
No, no, I agree. That's why I got confused when you asked Jim a question. Uh, Jim, Jim could say something.
Well, I'm happy to call upon somebody from the school board if they have a clarification question while Mr. Ambrose is in the middle of his presentation.
Well, I would like something clarified.
Yes.
All right. I, 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 I got, I got maybe confused because first you talked about two teachers in the element, well, two teachers, second grade, I believe. And then you were talking about one teacher going from fourth to fifth following the students. So my question is, I thought the budget committee's recommendation was to eliminate two teachers, but I'm counting now three.
Right.
Based on that, so is it two or is it three? You see where I got confused?
The BudCon recommended that we reduce, excuse me, two teachers. One, I'm saying that, that based on our deliberations at the administrative team, that, that would be too burdensome to the two elementary schools to do that.
You see where I get confused because you were talking about two second graders, and then you went to another, fourth to follow the fifth.
And to answer.
Just where I come up with three.
Chair, may I?
Yeah.
Jim, I'd love to just quickly clarify because I think that you're right, that I can, I can see your perspective about the numbers. I, I'm not disagreeing with you that when you have smaller class sizes, that intervention can happen in the classroom. I think that there's gotta be a lot of conversation over the next year or so about the definition of, of intervention and the way it works. Because I would agree with you that the best thing that we could do is make our schools have one pre-K to two or pre-K to three building so that we could reduce, if you just look at the second grade numbers that you just talked about, you, you are correct. Oops, I just.
Can you zoom in? It's really hard to see because it's not very good.
If you look at, if you look at the numbers in grade two, in Becky, there's seventeen, seventeen, and eighteen. In Memorial, there's fourteen, fifteen, and fourteen. If all the grade two teachers were in one building, we could reduce a teaching position and collapse the students across the other four or five classrooms and then fund the necessary intervention for kids who are struggling without touching anyone's taxes.
Okay.
Right? And that's the point, but we're not there yet, right? The point is, right now, we have two separate schools. So we can't, we, we're not funding any intervention for this year. I'm just simply trying to help you all to understand that if I could have reduced a teaching position, I would have gladly put that toward the intervention that we need. We just couldn't do it this year.
Charlton, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Anybody else? Larry? I'd like to say that, well, first of all, I'd like to say that I attended an EISA meeting, and one of the things that really came out clearly, once again, was the intervention and the professional development. And five years ago, when I ran for office and, you know, started to get really involved in this whole thing, one of the things I really recognized was that there was, at that time, the only thing I could find was called enrichment. But the enrichment budget was almost nothing, and, and it was like, why aren't we doing enrichment for these kids? It was just, you know, and it was a question that I think a bunch of us were asking at the time is, where's the quality? Where, where are we? And, and we're moving in that direction. I'm really happy about that. The thing is that I'm very concerned that we've identified areas where there are potential savings, thanks to the NASDAQ study and to the leadership that's going on here. But we're not there yet, and so it's kinda like, what comes, where's, where's the cart, where's the horse as far as doing some of these things? And I'm in, I'm in a real, a quandary about it. One of the things I do recognize very clearly is that the voters are the ones who finally decide, and they will have a default budget, and they will have a proposed budget. And if we could propose a budget which supports the goals a- as expressed, and then also have a default budget, and then the voters can decide which direction they wanna go in, which is what they do in March. So, you know, it's one of the things that gives me a little bit of room to breathe on the whole thing because I wish we were already next year or the year after with the savings being happening in the district so we could reallocate it. I guess that's, that's really all I have to say. Oh, the other thing I wanted to say is that we're still waiting on a little bit of information on, um, the lease truck, on, um, whether it's a one-dollar buyout, whether, um, some of the revenue versus expense calculations on NASDAQ and on preschool, some things that we've asked for. And, um, I don't feel personally responsible about making any adjustments to our budget number until we get some of this official information we've been, we've been seeking. I, I'm happy to have the rest of the committee do whatever you decide you wanna do. But from my standpoint, I'd like to just kinda stay where we are right now and wait until we get the rest of the information that we're waiting for. Yes, Cheryl?
I have one more question. We received some information during the week about some error in what we had thought was gonna be a ninety-one thousand dollar savings for, I, I'm, and I'm not sure, was it a teacher who was, was on leave and then not, or not replacing that teacher?
Michelle will answer. She's got the bunch, she's, has a lot of the information that Chair Collier just.
We just haven't gotten it, so we can.
I'd let Michelle share that at this time because there's some information about the, the cuts that I would recommend to the BudCon that we have Michelle explain to you some of the things that you did or, or made decisions about.
First of all, let me clarify that they're not cuts. It's, it's, it's just a, it's just a recommendation. They are possible savings off of that recommendation. Cut sounds, you know, like we're going like this. That's not what it is. This is about trying to present, uh, you know, to put together and present a budget which is gonna make sense for the schools and make sense for the taxpayers. It's gotta, it's gotta meet both, both things.
If the term reduction is more comfortable, but regardless.
Savings is more comfortable.
Not allocate.
Yes. No, I'm sorry, but it's just, it's, you know, the usual.
I'm not gonna argue this point. I don't agree, but I'm not gonna argue.
You said what, Ellie? You're in recess. Excuse me, sorry. So, Michelle, you had some additional information for us on some of those outstanding questions?
Yeah, I apologize. I thought that, um, we had provided the responses, the, the lease, there's only one lease purchase, there's a dollar buyout on the, the truck. The revenue, the information by the various different programs, we wanted to gather historical information, so that is being gathered. It's not easily obtainable because it's not called out specifically in the, the financial system. It's embedded with other revenues. So that is, is being gathered. The information on the staffing position, the, what happened was there was a, trying to figure out where to start with this response, so. I'm looking at ways that we may improve the tracking of positions by using position numbers instead of just trying to figure out the name of who's in what role and who replaces that person in what role and tracking name by name. I'm trying to identify a numeric methodology that if you have one position, you know there's one person in it. So that's a work in progress. With this particular salary position that we're talking about, what happened was there is somebody on a leave of absence this year. That person that's on a leave of absence is projected to come back next year, so they're budgeted in next year. But the person who's in the role now was budgeted next year. So there's two people in one position. With a more refined tracking mechanism, you would realize, oh, we have one position, and there are two names trying to be put into that position number. So that was a, a miss. And then the amount that was proposed as an adjustment for that was an estimate. When I went back and I looked at, based on what we can best see as seniority rights at this point, and I don't wanna start sort of wildfire about, you know, who that would be and what that would mean, but the dollar amount clearly would be, you know, a, a less senior employee. but the dollar amount clearly would be, you know, a less senior employee. So the amount that would be reduced would be less than what was originally used as an estimate. And the amount that would be reduced is about $65,000 as opposed to what was put in there as a placeholder, the 90-plus-ish.
And the numbers on things like the cost of, the cost for preschool versus the revenue, the tuition revenue or the cost for, you know, versus the revenue that, that comes in from tuition or the revenue that comes in from the NASDAQ or the, I'm sorry, the NECC tuitions and things like... What are the real costs of the district so that we can make our decisions accordingly? You know, those are going to be very helpful. And one of the things that we proposed was adding back money for more NASDAQ, but we don't, I mean, NASDAQ for NECC. But we don't really know what the real cost of that. We made some assumptions, but we're waiting for real numbers on that so that we know. And also, having gone to the EISA, there may be some other changes going on with NECC that won't even anymore want this. So I think we need some updated information on that.
The number that you started us with at the meeting, at our last meeting?
Yes.
Had you already subtracted the $65,000?
I'd subtracted 91, which was the amount that was...
So that's why you put that money in at the last...
Yes, but now we're told that the actual position is most likely $65,000, not 91, including benefits.
Right, but at the end of the meeting, you added, we were actually at 35... At the beginning of the meeting, you had us at $35,977, but it should have been $35,937,933. That was what you corrected that.
I believe, yeah, with Michelle's input, she corrected it.
So that $37,000 that you added...
$37 million?
No, $37,000 that you added at the end because on our final motion, we were at $35,780. And you upped it. You said, oops, I made a mistake. It became $35,817. So that $37,000 was the differential between the 91 that you had subtracted and the 65?
No, it wasn't. It was, it was Michelle putting the numbers on a spreadsheet and the numbers I'd put into my calculator versus what she found on the spreadsheet were the ones that we went with. That was where the correction came in. She had a spreadsheet which was more accurate than my pushing numbers while we were in the middle of a meeting.
It didn't have anything to, if I could, it did not have anything to do with the change that we just discussed. It, that Budget Committee proposed budget number that was, that you confirmed includes a reduction of $91,000 for this staff issue that we're discussing.
So might I understand you're at $35,000?
$35 million.
$35, yeah, I wish it was, yeah, $35,817,933.
I believe that's what we as a committee came, not me, we as a committee voted on, yeah.
I want to make sure. You are not in favor of this number now?
I am in favor of retaining that number right now until we get the rest of our, until we get the rest of our information that we're looking for so we can make decisions on the staffing at the elementary schools and decisions on NASDAQ funding and decisions on, you know, the $10,000 in the school books and just, and, and decisions on this truck lease, which we didn't know was a lease that was already in effect at that, at that time, that it's actually the second year of the lease.
When will that happen?
I'm suggesting we do it in our meeting in, in January, our first meeting in January.
Oh, all right, okay.
Have a chance to get the rest of this information and do it. But that's just my suggestion. We can do whatever you guys want.
I know.
Please take note, we're having a public hearing someplace around January 15th.
Yes.
A number has to be done...
At our next meeting in January.
At the public, in order to be, go into the public notice, which I assume will be in Carriertown News.
Is a number, Phyllis, I, I think you've already sent in the notices about the public hearing. I don't believe it has a budget number in it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just a public hearing. We, we do our budget number at the public hearing.
Well, it can change after the public hearing, but...
It should, yeah, after we get input from the public.
The town's public notice has the, the budget number.
Got it. Yes.
If I may, I just, I worked hard on these numbers and I just want to take two seconds to summarize a couple of things. I, I have a list of the things that you recommended at the previous meeting. I'm asking to be, to double check that I have this correct.
Okay.
You reduced a staff member, thinking that it was $91,000, but the actual cost is $65,000. Number two, there was...
I think we've been told $64,000. We took the 91.
It's still 91.
Right, but I'm saying that the actual cost is $65,000 for that position. So that's something that needs to be discussed, right? It's not 91.
This board never made a motion to reduce any number by 91,000. The start number that we were given to discuss...
Thank you, Jim, okay.
And then the differential was added at the end of the evening.
All right.
But that was not the differential for the 64 versus the 91. It was a miscalculation. It was, it was corrected by Michelle doing the spreadsheet. Remember, we just said that it was, it was not the 91 versus 64,000.
So the, the budget, the number that was adopted, that was approved by the Budget Committee does include a reduction of $91,000 for that position. The change that, the change that happened was simply a numerical calculation issue that when adding up the numbers, Annie had a different result than when it was added up on a spreadsheet that was...
So I was using one of these.
Right. And so all I was doing at that time was sharing that if I were to take the decisions that had been made in the evening and the budget that was adopted, they would not tie. So I brought that to Annie's attention and she brought it to the committee's attention and we just made sure that the decisions correlated with the resulting number.
Thank you.
Clarify.
So I, I was attempting to just walk through each thing and check, so...
Yep.
The Budcom adopted, I'm just asking so I'm sure I know what I'm, I've got this, I got very confused here. If, if you, if you reduce, if the budget that you started off with, Mr. Doggett, and then ended up with, had a $91,000 reduction for that teacher that was accidentally budgeted for at the high school, which was organically caught through the procedure, awesome job to whoever asked that question. I, I want to be clear that that's actually $65,000 for that position.
I thought it was 64.
It's $64,959.
65, okay, so you have the right number, thank you.
So it's, so that's the first one. So there's really $26,000 there that's been, that needs to be just addressed. I'm not recommending what you do with it. I'm just saying that there's $26,000 there. The cotton athletics reduced 32,000 and it does say on this sheet, cotton athletics, I didn't, trying to be careful. It says $32,44. That means that we will not buy any uniforms for kids.
No, that does not mean that. It means that we won't buy more uniforms than we bought in the last year.
I need to clarify this.
What?
I'm asking.
This is getting, the Budget Committee's supposed to be having deliberations.
Yeah.
I mean, I think he's just asking for clarification.
Let me finish.
No, actually, Annie, Annie Chairman.
Hey, okay, hang on.
Are we having a Budget Committee?
Hang on, hang on, everybody. So, Tom, it would be good if you just brought those up without making editorial comments on what it means.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm clarifying.
I recommend you guys put the list up on the wall and just go through them and you guys tell us what you guys want.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm good.
We're not going to do...
Why? I need clarification because I want to hear evidence. I want to hear evidence.
Because it's our meeting and because we're going to do it the way that we decided to do it?
I think what I'm going to say will clarify a lot of things. If it's not for them, tell us where to make the cuts in uniforms.
Great.
All I want, all they can do is give us the numbers. We then say, uniforms or basketball hoops or whatever we decide to, to cut. So I can see where maybe you had the discussion about uniforms and it overflowed, but basically you're a numbers person. We recommend to cut X number of dollars from athletics. You don't even, actually, in a sense, you, you kind of don't even have that responsibility, but I, I understand where you're coming from. We want to cut, let's say cut, the superintendent's budget is this much, we recommend this much.
Right. And here's the rationale for it, and that's what we do.
There we go. What's the rationale?
And so that's what we do is our rationale. So yes, we had $32,44 in athletics. Jim, do you have the minutes right there? You can say exactly what they are.
I have all the notes.
Okay.
Okay, what were the others? Because I'm curious, Michelle.
There was no motion to re, to reduce the...
No, there was a motion for a, a number.
Right, right. The, I have all the notes regarding ads, savings areas in there. Our final number was $35,817,933. It carried by a five to one vote.
Right, with, I think, one abstention, did it?
With one abstention, yes.
Cheryl, yes?
Question. Were these suggested savings presented to Mr. Ambrose after the Budget Committee meeting?
They're in our minutes, so yes, he's seen them in our minutes.
So he just got the minutes. He didn't get an, an additional list.
I'm just trying to understand what you were reducing in athletics, but if people don't want to say so, I'm good.
Because if that were posted, I think it would be easier for us because I believe this meeting is going to be a joint meeting where the school board deliberates as to what we just presented. So if they're not clear of what's being presented, it's going to make for a really difficult discussion. Is there any way we could post those numbers so everybody can see them?
Could I, if I may, if I may? I got to tell you, right now, I'm not sure because it appears to me you still have some numbers to crunch before you can even give us a, a number that we can work on. You've got the...
I would agree with that.
Okay, okay, so forget what they are. So I guess what I'm, what I'm, the point that I'm at is if you can't give us the numbers so we can't deliberate later, how much longer do we want this meeting to go? I'm sorry to put it that way, folks, but I, I'm looking for numbers so that we can then say, okay, and then ask, well, where did they come up with that? They came up with eliminate basketball hoops. Oh, we don't agree with that. Well, let's talk about that. But we can't do that because we don't have numbers. So I don't know how you want to go further, either committee, but I just want to put my two cents out there because I think it's a valid point.
I agree with you. And yes, Jim?
At the last Budget Committee meeting, we were given a number to start with. That was $35,977,000. That is not the superintendent's proposed budget. That came in with certain things, the corrections that the chair made as a starting point. We were not supplied with a list of what those...
Well, how did you get to that number, if I can ask?
That was, that was the starting, starting number, the board that the Budget Committee then looked at, areas of savings, areas of increase. They rationalized some savings, they added some increases. Quite honestly, from the comments that were made prior to that discussion and the comments that were made after that discussion and that number had been ratified, I don't think that anybody's opinion should be changing because we find out that, you know, that we get to keep the truck for a dollar. There, I have no problem with going to a public hearing with that number. I did, I was the person who did not support this number because I, I believe that it is way too high to begin with. And I have a strange feeling, from my point of view and from what I'm seeing in my town, we're going to end up with no contracts and a default budget. I would like to see us not end up in that position, but if we continue along this line, I believe that's where we're going to end up.
Cheryl?
I believe the number that we worked off was presented by the chair and the chair said, this is how I arrived at the number.
That's correct.
So there was a list of things with costs associated. And then we went through each one of those and said, do we agree with what the chair has presented or not? Is that list anywhere that could be found?
Michelle has it in the spreadsheet.
Can we post that?
Is this the final list, Michelle?
I don't, I don't have it in a document that's easy to...
That's why I was asking Jim if you had the copy of the next.
I have the minutes, I don't have the addendum.
Phyllis, do you have that in a scan? Do you have this one in a scanned form?
Annie, you don't have the list that you presented?
I mean, I was going to walk through them.
No, I don't have it with me.
There's not that many of them, but let me, let me, let me try to send it to Pam and she can post it up there. So give me just a second.
Tom, in fairness, the only, the only thing was the commentary that was objected to on, on the $32,000 that it meant no uniforms because that was not what we were recommending.
If I was allowed to finish, I was asking a question as to what the rationale was for that cut. What is being, what, what was the rationale? Because the athletic director explained to me that 15,000 of that was new extracurricular activities that would not be funded. And the rest is all the replacement uniforms for the kids in her budget. So I'm asking the Budcom, is that what you understand supposed to be reducing?
No.
Okay.
What, what, she has a number in this year's budget for replacement uniforms and equipment. There was an additional amount added to that of about $17,44. So there was 15,000 plus an additional 17,000 in equipment and uniforms, which we felt didn't need to be added, that she could go flat. It didn't mean that we were cutting anything out of what she had prior. It meant that we weren't allowing the increase or we were recommending not having the increase. Obviously, you guys make the decision on that.
Yeah, no, no, my question just was, did people understand what they were reducing? Because I didn't. I had to ask the key to tell me today.
Okay.
If you don't want to know that, that's okay, but I...
So I just sent an email to Pam. Actually, can open it up. I just want to give the caveat that this is my mechanism for tracking where we are so it's not necessarily presented in a way that's going to be easy to follow without some explanation so I can walk through, folks, through the calculations if you would like.
Right. I mean, I can pretty well remember all of them, but I don't want to just go by memory.
So would you like me to kind of walk that through?
Sure.
So on the...
Can you make it bigger, please?
Yeah, thanks, Adam.
Can you make it bigger? So on that document...
Can you make it a bit bigger? Zoom.
Twelve plus sign, maybe.
So we started with the school board's proposed budget, which the school board had adopted the superintendent's budget as a starting point. So you can see December 5th, the school board adopted $36,112,427. And, Jim, if you can, you're going to end up having to make it just a slightly smaller, unfortunately, to see. So if you could scroll down just a little bit, you can, over to the right as you're looking at it, there's explanations. So they're going to...
Just talk about.
So I'll explain them. You can't see the explanation on there, but... So there's, there are two numbers below there that have Budget Committee numbers, but I'm going to go to the column that has the list of adjustments. There's nine, don't go back up, Pam. Okay, so the $91,000.
Down just a little.
I got it, I got it.
Thank you, Tom. So the, I'll wait for Tom to get that.
I think we should increase the technology budget.
This is really exciting.
The red is second with the M. Yeah, the next one, yeah, right there. Thank you. All right, so now if you scroll down just slightly.
It's not because I'm not in the right view. Just hang on one second. You keep talking and I'll get us there.
So what I'm going to do is go through the list of adjustments. I'm going to step through the process that the committee followed that evening.
I don't, I don't think we need to go through the whole process. If we just get to the net of the bottom line, I think that's, that's where, you know, that would be helpful.
So let me explain them. So we started with the board's proposed budget, $36,112,427. The adjustments that... The adjustments that Chair Collier came to the meeting with were as follows. A reduction of ninety-one thousand for the staff position that was budgeted with two people in it. You can see that negative ninety-one thousand. That's the one that we just discussed, but that's what was available for information at that time at that meeting. There was a proposed cut in athletics of thirty-two thousand, forty-four dollars.
That's that amount, right?
There was a proposed cut in laptops, a half of what was in the budget of twenty thousand. A proposed cut to the air conditioning unit for that old boardroom of ten thousand. A proposed cut of the lease of the truck, because at the time, it was understood to be a new proposed lease, which it was not. It's a second payment on, second year of the lease that was established this year. So, a reduction of eighteen thousand. Reduction of the floor scrubber of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty. Reduction of fiber cabling, twenty-two thousand. Reduction of line painting, eight thousand, seven hundred. An add of twenty thousand for books, and an add for NECC courses, two more classes. So, when I talk about process, this is the piece that I just want to clarify for folks. When you add up that list, it totals a hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. If we can go up slightly, Tom, for just a minute. I want to go up to, with a, go up a little bit more. So, stop right there. You can see on December sixth, I have Budget Committee proposed. That's the number that Chair Collier came into the committee meeting proposing. But when you take the superintendent's, the board's proposed budget, and you subtract one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four, you get mathematically thirty-five million, nine thirty-seven, nine thirty-three. So, that's the number that we were starting with. And then the committee continued to deliberate, and then reduced one teacher. So, these are notes to the side, and you had some discussions, put back in, take back out. And so, I was trying to track those conversations and provide an updated budget number to the group as you were kind of going through that process. And then the committee settled on additional reductions of seventy thousand for one elementary teacher at Bakey, a reduction of seventy thousand for one elementary teacher at Memorial, and adding back twenty thousand of the laptops that had previously been proposed to be cut. Those changes in total reduced the budget of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars from the board's proposed, leaving the Budget Committee's recommended budget on December sixth, mathematically being thirty-five million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So, my understanding, and Jim, Jim, Mr. Doggett, I'm asking you to help me, if I'm not correct, the board, the school board, should now deliberate that number. Because you, the Budcom has adopted a number to send to the school board. I asked Chair Collier if we could have a joint meeting, so I could explain to both groups the rationale around the two teaching positions, and share the information regarding the truck lease, because it's year two of the truck lease, and to make sure that folks, it's not really, it's a new expenditure in the sense that the truck is in a second year. It's not, it's not like if we reduce it, we still have to pay it. That's fine. I'm just simply saying that, that the, the bottom line is that if you folks want to hold at the number that you settled on the other night, if that's your decision after my presentation about the two teaching positions, then all you have to say is, "We're going to hold at the number that we settled on, and the board needs to deliberate right now whether or not they're going to accept that number or amend it and send it back to you for consideration." So, as my, that's my understanding of the process right now.
There's another...
I am correct, Larry. Okay.
Yeah, yes, Tom.
Can we turn the lights up?
Sure.
We done for that?
Yeah.
Are you?
I, I, I'm done.
Yeah, be good with it. Okay.
This, a couple of things. This is the Budget Committee conundrum of having it both ways.
Hey, guys.
Want Jack to let the wacky? People wanting to have, have it both ways. I, I've been around a long time, and I've been on the committee three years. And we, we always drift back what I think is a trap for the Budget Committee. And I've, I've told many of you, you and I, many of us have talked about this trap. We get told, "You give us a figure how we spend the money you have no control over, you have no control over." I've heard that over and over and over. So, when we start getting into the weeds of where this budget's going to get spent, it's the trap for the Budget Committee, and it's a conundrum that, the both ways conundrum. We want you to tell us where you want to cut it, but you can't, you can't do any line item. And you, and even if you say, I don't know, cut ten teachers, well, we don't have to. We're going to spend the money where we want it to. I'm not looking at you.
No, 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 I hear what you're saying, and I agree with that.
So, that's, I've heard this over and over. It's a trap. It's, it's a, I'm trapped. And that's why I'm always so hesitant to get into uniforms and basketballs and that, because it ends up being a trap, because everyone can make a great argument for their personal thing, and, "Oh, you're not going to buy uniforms." Well, you can still buy the uniforms, because you're the ones that control it, and you'll tell us that. You'll say, "It's, it's, we control where this money goes. You don't." Okay? So, I, I think we're spending too much time on this at this point. And I, and I also agree with Mr. Broderick, that if we got more information coming in, then we should just make some, I'll, maybe I'll make the motion. I wasn't at that meeting. I don't agree with the figure, but make the motion. We stay with this figure for tonight, pending further, getting further information.
Okay, can we have a second?
Well, wait, I haven't made the motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you made the motion.
Yeah, no.
I misinterpreted.
No, that's all right. I was going to say something else, but... Now, hold that.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion to, to reaffirm its figure of thirty-five thousand, eight seventeen...
Thirty-five million?
Thirty-five, oh, God, I went with a thousand. Thirty-five million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine thirty-three, pending receipt of further information and deliberations of the Budget Committee.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Second. I think Mr. Doggett beat you to it, but is there any, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a, an amendment to that motion by adding twenty-six thousand dollars back onto it, which covers that missing, reduces that ninety-one thousand down to the correct amount of sixty-four thousand, or sixty-five, whatever it was.
Is there a second? Okay, so discussion on the amendment to the motion?
I don't think we should do that tonight, Larry.
Why?
Because there's other stuff coming out. We'll do it at a later date. You know, I mean, if you want to, because otherwise, we're going to be here a long time, because I got a bunch of stuff I want to talk about. Do you really want to do that tonight?
Please, look where they took me, guys.
Yeah.
No.
I think, I mean, I think, I think, for instance, the NECC, I, I would like to take out, because there's, because of the EISA thing, there's going to be stuff that's going to, and then we need to discuss these elementary positions.
Yeah.
Cheryl, you hit your hand up.
I would be opposed to this, because I do think we have some information tonight that we can, in fact, act on. So, I would be opposed to this motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, so, all in favor of the motion to reaffirm the budget number of two weeks ago?
Wait, wait, what happens to Larry's motion?
Oh, the amendment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The, in favor of the amendment to reduce our, to increase our budget, proposed budget number from two weeks ago by twenty-six thousand. All in favor? All in favor, therefore, that's defeated by a vote of two to five.
Can we put names of people who voted, how they voted?
Yes. Mrs. Gannon and Mr. Healy, Mr. Heath, voted in favor, and the rest voted nay. So, all in favor of the motion to reaffirm the existing budget number pending further information and discussion? Does that be correct? Okay, all in favor?
Do we have a date for that?
Oh, our next meeting, well, our, we have a meeting tomorrow, but I would suggest we're not going to get this additional information, so it would be the first week, the first Thursday in January, which would be the week before the public hearing.
When, when will the board be able to deliberate if you do not?
That's the third.
Um, all in favor?
Before, today, I, I hate to interrupt, because I know it's your board meeting, but that's going to give us a week to make your decisions, and if we don't agree somehow, come to, to, to agreed upon, negotiated agreement.
No, actually, no. It would, it would give you a week before the public hearing, but then after the public hearing, our proposed budget could change based on input from the public. I mean, this is a moving target, all the way till...
Okay, I've got, I've got, okay, I, I'm just concerned we're going to be bumped right up against the deliberative.
I think you guys can handle it.
I mean, you're talking about the end of January.
Hold on, hold on. Michelle, I have a question.
Yes?
I was just commenting that you'll need to build in time to develop materials for the hearing as well.
For the public hearing? Yeah, you'll be getting those from the Budget Committee a week prior, because we'll have our meeting, and we'll put them all together. So, you'll be getting them a week in advance of the public hearing.
Is that enough time? I mean, seriously? Thirty-six million dollars, and you give them one, one week's notice?
It's for, Ellie, it is not a notice. That's a notice to produce materials for distribution at the public hearing. That's all it is.
I think Michelle is concerned that she will not have enough time to do that in a week.
Well, I don't know, so typically...
To produce, to make copies of materials?
Well, typically, I assist in compiling stuff, so if I'm not needing to do any of that, and all I need to do is photocopy, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm just not sure of what...
Okay, well, let me, let me just give you my rationale for not doing anything tonight, and I'd like to, I'd like to abstain on this vote, motion, because I don't even want to affirm. I don't want to do anything tonight.
I thought we were in the middle of taking the vote. Are we still discussing?
Well, I think we went back to discussion, if that's okay. And I'm going to dis...
You're in charge.
Thank you. The thing is that it's, I, I totally lost where I was going with that. I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought with that. The public hearing will be given, and then the following week after that, the Budget Committee decides whether they want to make any changes to their budget proposal for the deliberative session. I mean, that's the process.
Because the first, the first meeting, the next meeting would be January third, which is the first Thursday in January. That would be the Budcom's next meeting, correct?
The third, yes. And then the tenth is the public hearing, and then the seventeenth is the Budget Committee's deliberations after the public hearing.
Is there any chance that if the board deliberates, if you adopt us and affirm this number, that the board can come out of recess and discuss that, and potentially pose a common ground? Because I think that we're really close to having a common number between the two groups. I can't, I have questions for my board right now. So, what I would say is, if you take the vote and affirm this number, could you recess for a minute and allow us to discuss?
Sure.
Without leaving?
It's okay with me. Is that okay with you folks? So, um, we have... We have...
Yeah, well.
We have, we have a motion on the floor to reaffirm the number that we proposed two weeks ago. All in favor? That would be five in favor. Cheryl, your hand was up?
No, it was not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't see for sure. So, that would be Ms. Seer, Mr. Kozak, Mr. Doggett, and Mr. Swayze in favor. And opposed? Okay, so then that would be three opposed. So, the motion carries, and we've affirmed our number, and we'll recess for school board deliberations?
Twenty-three minutes and forty-two seconds.
Yeah, we, we plug this in. No, it's going to be five minutes less than that. Five minutes less than that.
I got an eye bone.
You'd be backing Mr. Swayze in half an hour, and that's it, and there's no...
Okay. All right, buddy. I'm in touch. I got you.
All right.
All right, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Take two steps forward.
I, I, I feel like, I've done a lot of work on this today. And without going into the weeds, what I would say to you is that if you, as a board, decide to meet the Budcom halfway, there's, in my opinion, there really is a hundred and forty thousand dollars discrepancy between the two budgets. They, they reduce two teaching positions. I'm advising you, as your educational leader, that that, the two teaching positions are not a good idea. That doesn't mean that I can't find some other savings in the budget to offset this situation. So, I would advise you, as a board, to say to them, "We can come to consensus between the two boards if the Budcom would accept putting back the financial amount of one teaching position, and then I will bring to you what the cuts will be." And frankly, I found fifty-five thousand of it, in the sense that if we have to, Jody has said that she could reduce some money in homeless transportation, about twenty-five thousand. And there's thirty thousand dollars. I think that we can probably reduce another bus run. Right? So, that's a good chunk of it there. I just think that we're really close to having a deal between the two groups. And what I don't want is for us to go into the deliberative, the first deliberative, with the Budcom's budget being one thing, the board's being another, and the default being another, and two teachers' contracts. I really want a unified budget. So, I'm simply advising you that if you split the difference with them, I can make it work. And I'm, I'm taking the Jim Baker approach. I, I don't need... I was, I'm not going to make that joke. But the, the approach of, I don't, I'm not, I, I, if you just, just, I, I can tell you what the cuts would be. I already gave you fifty-five thousand of what I think they would be. A budget's a map, and we may need to deliberate some of those changes later, but I feel like we can make it work. I mean, I don't, it's like, it's like any good negotiation. I don't love it. But we're going to get there and get it done.
And I would agree with you. I, I think, other than the hundred and forty-six thousand for the two elementary teachers, I say we really have an agreement with the Budcom. And I, I really, as a community member, never mind now as a board member, I really want us to go united into that public hearing in June, January tenth. I think it's very important. One of the lessons in Kingston for many years with the Budcom is if the Budcom is incongruent with the selectment, things move well. That means you've done your job as Budcom people, have reviewed the budget, have scrutinized it. I know it's a bone of contention for you, Mr. Swayze, because you get to make the suggestions. They may not necessarily come from those particular line items. However, I think if you, instead of a hundred, two hundred and ninety-four, you get to a hundred and fifty-four thousand, and a thirty-six million dollar budget, I think you could take that out.
I, I'm going to be really honest with you. I'm disappointed in you, Superintendent. I'm kind of actually frustrated. I didn't start off frustrated this evening with you. I got frustrated with some of the paraphrases I'm about to say here. "We should be able to easily teach in the classroom," the comment from Mr. Doggett. "If we support a budget that supports the goals," by you, Ms. Collier, and I agree with that statement, "we can do whatever you guys want." Which, it's not whatever we want, yeah, and then, Charlton, we are in a trap. I agree you're in a trap, but I, I want to remind the board, the school board and the superintendent, in partnership, established and adopt, and adopted on September nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, way after we should have, some school board goals. One of those goals states, "Set measures to evaluate where the district performance is with regard to meeting academic goals per the new definition of student success, and a map outcomes, goals into program resource allocations, and adjust program resource allocations based on the outcomes." Sorry to read to you, but we need to hear that. I interpret that goal as four areas: data, insight, action, results. I question do the boards, us here, when I hear, "We can do whatever we want," or "We're getting stuck in a trap." I question, "Do the boards, both the school board and the Budget Committee, understand different inputs? Do we understand what was required by the teachers and the leadership staff that's sitting back there to go ahead and produce a report on our students' progress?" Like, we don't know that, and we've been learning an awful lot about that, and yet we keep going back to the conversation. We can reduce fours, which is a cut. I don't believe that, because we're the first in the nation to be doing performance-based learning or very, you know, our pace assessments. Our, we have personal learning environments per pupil. My daughter, the only board member here with a kid at the board in schools, my daughter gets personalized learning. That is something that is highly attractive, and this is our only golden nugget that both of our towns have. So, we need to invest in academics, invest in instruction, and in our facilities. We should keep hearing what Superintendent Ambrose, you keep saying about, "Our facilities are hampering us." So, let's not cut our nose off to save our face a few flipping dollars. So, my point being here, again, until we have the resources in place, so you can come back and help us understand the outcomes, and help us understand the actions that we are suggesting, because when I hear kai, 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 does any one of us have an understanding of the outcomes? I don't think we do, because we can do whatever we want. So, we need to understand how we're going to measure that effectiveness. And no offense, sir, when you come to us saying, "Well, barter," no, you guys... And no offense, sir, when you come to us saying, "Well, barter," no, you guys came to the table with the budget, you should have came to the table with, "We can't do without." So until then, I don't personally support anything, because your leadership team helped you create a budget that you came to us and presented to us. We need to come up with the mechanisms to alert our leadership, your leadership team, of what needs to be reported out on. So I fear, moving forward, because we've done an awful lot of chat, you know, we've, we've been doing this for years now, I'm the eldest member of the School Board, we've been doing this for years, like, trying to figure out, do we really need that, or can we do without? Until we put the levers in place to go ahead and say, "Here's the outcomes that we're striving for," and if we remove this, this is the impact. We are not educators here, and if we are, we should be going, except for you, Mr. Broderick, I know you were once in the classroom. If we are educators and we want to go ahead and do this stuff, I highly suggest...
Dr. Brown?
Oh, sure, and I am too as well, I'm doing professional developments nationwide too. But long story short, I, I just want to caution us, because we're getting into a slippery slope here. I'm very concerned with any change in the budget because if your leadership team says you can do with it.
All right, I'm going to get down there and work the way up.
Okay, I do have a problem with what you're saying, Corey, because we do not have the final say. The voters have the final say of what's going to be done. We have to come prepared to give them a reasonable budget that they feel that they can live with. Our job, and the Budget Committee's job, is to work at that budget that we can give the best education for the dollar that we're spending. And I think, all kidding aside, I agree with you, Mr. Superintendent, is that we can go with $140,000, and we should be able to do it. If you say we can do it, you are the one who made the budget.
Well, I'm saying half of that. I'm saying if the two groups split...
Saying seventy.
Seventy thousand.
Oh, I don't want to do that, but seventy thousand is fine.
We're 294 apart right now.
Right. And I'm saying that, but the 140 is the two teaching positions that they reduced, and I'm saying I cannot reduce those, I do not feel from an educational practice, which is kind of funny, I feel like, I agree with Corey that that would be a concern. Right? I have a concern that reducing two teaching positions at Bakersfield Memorial is not good. However, I, as I said, I have looked hard, I met with the admin team yesterday and we had a long conversation about the, the, the budget, and Jody worked hard with her budget and said that it's a little bit of a risk, but she can find $25,000 in her budget for homeless students that's not being utilized this year, it varies from year to year, and I think that, that, yeah, we do, we do, and it's really expensive, I'll explain later, I don't want to go into the weeds. But, but I just, I, I want to be clear that Michelle and I talked about the busing, and yeah, I'm probably going to catch all you know what, the first month of school, because people don't like it when bus stops change and it's, but the reality is we have a declining enrollment and we're keep, we've kept the same buses forever. So I, I feel like I reduced one last year, we can do one more, and that would be about $55,000, so then if we met halfway between the board and the BudCom, you know, the two teaching positions at $70,000, that would get the, the total amount to, to be more palatable. Now, I'm, I'm telling you that as a, I have concerns about the teachers' contracts passing. Okay? And yeah, I, I mean, really, we have amazing teachers. I want to keep them. So if I gave you all my real budget, you'd have a $1.5 million increase in intervention, and the other 800 grand that we put in the list that wasn't in the budget because we felt like it wasn't responsible to do it. So for me to find another $70,000, I don't love it, but it's negotiations. I don't get everything I want at the table when I don't love it, you know, when I'm negotiating, and gosh, Jim and Larry know what that's like this last month. So I'm simply saying that if the Bud, BudCom is saying, "We felt like we found $140,000," I'm saying split, split that.
All right, so you're saying that the board...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to let each member speak and then go back to you.
I was just going to get clarification.
Okay, that's fine.
If we take the 70 off the 294, 894, we're coming down to a budget reduction of 224,894.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. That's what I'm recommending to the board.
Jim?
Okay, so, the BudCom proposed $35,817,933?
Right, yes.
And the School Board?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, 112,427. Half the difference is 294,494. You're saying that...
No, that's the difference, Jim.
Yeah, that's the difference.
Yes, sir, yes.
Yeah, half the difference is 147, 247.
That's not what I'm saying, though. What I'm saying is that we're accepting the other items that they cut, and we're taking half of the two teaching positions. The two teaching positions were $140,000.
Yeah, so you're saying reduce...
I'm saying split that with the BudCom.
Reduce the, the $35,817,933 by 70,000.
Yes, sir.
Increase it.
Add increases. Add back in 70,000.
Reduce that from the School Board's number, basically.
Well, take, take the BudCom's adopted number and add 70,000 to it, and that's where we'll be at.
Okay.
And then I will let you know what the exact cuts will be after I meet with the administrative team. I just feel like at this late in the hour with the teachers' contracts on the table, these two groups need to be united, even if we don't totally agree.
We all agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, take, okay, 36,112,427.
Jim, Michelle already has it all added up for you, buddy.
Minus 35,877,933.
Have you seen the retro calculator that guy has?
Okay, so we got, so basically that's an increase of last year's budget of about $730,000.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a cut.
It's a cut from my original proposed budget.
From your proposal.
Right, or the School Board's adopted budget, technically.
It's a cut of 224,494 from the super's budget.
From the School Board's first adopted.
And the School Board's budget.
How much cut?
224,427.
Two, two, four.
Two, two, four, 494. And the Budget Committee is currently at 294,494. Seventy thousand dollars being the only difference.
But nevertheless, that would be an increase of $730,000 over our current budget.
A little more than 2.3%. Yes, sir.
And then teachers' contracts.
Exactly, 2.1%.
2.1% increase.
Teachers' contracts and support staff contracts, and administrative con, or support staff contracts and teachers' contracts on top of that.
Right, and I can't discuss what those amounts are because they haven't been ratified yet, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mason talks about the money that's needed to educate, educate the students. The RSA talks about providing money for an adequate education within the means of the community to pay. And in our last meeting, I talked about the necessity of getting the teachers' and support staff contracts passed, and I made a proposal to reduce the superintendent's budget by 500,000, the proposed budget by 500,000.
Or you reduced it to 500,000 increase?
Yeah, I, to a $35,648,700.
You reduced it by 400 in whatever the difference.
And I think this, again, this is about balance. You know, the, the operating budget has been the sacred cow of the school district ever since I've been attending School Board meetings. The Budget Committee has come up with proposals over the years, and sometimes we've had separate proposals from the Budget Committee, sometimes separate proposals from the School Board. The communities got together, whatever came out of the deliberative goes to the polls, and it doesn't pass or it does pass. Right now, we've got a default budget of $35,618,000, we've got a proposed budget of $35,877,93. If we could bring that down, put the difference between what the BudCom proposed tonight and what the, the School Board proposed, I, I could, I could vote for that. But a $70, a $70,000 increase, I can't, I can't support.
So at our last meeting two weeks ago, I, I expressed the same feelings that Mr. Ambrose did and Mr. Baker, as far as the priorities, in my opinion, is that the teachers' contracts need to pass this year. And my feeling is that the budget needs to be as low as we can reasonably construct it in order for the community to feel comfortable doing that. So I'm in favor of Mr. Ambrose's suggestion, they've, he's talked to his, you know, leadership team, and they've come up with a couple of cuts. The Budget Committee will accept our number, and we can all go forward with this unified number that, I'm in favor of that.
Yep.
Ideally, we keep the BudCom number and offer the voters a, a regular education reserve fund warrant article, where we would have the money set aside if we had an influx of elementary school students. That way, the public can decide if they want to support that, and I would, I would definitely argue in favor of that warrant article, of having that warrant article. As I've said before, we've got these three expensive collective bargaining agreements coming up, we've been accused of micromanaging when we bring specifics to the meetings, and then we're accused of rash budget numbers when we are absent of those specifics. So anyone who takes a microphone in a public meeting is trying to micromanage our district, but only we are the elected officials. And I've tried on numerous occasions to explain where we could have some savings. Our high school budget, our high school budget is one-third of the budget roughly, and I see significant savings in various areas which it looks like we're looking into in our high school schedule. So I believe, last time I looked, 50% of our regular and honors courses were currently available free of charge through V-Lex. So there's plenty of room for saving money. I would support the BudCom number and a warrant article with a specific amount for regular education reserve fund. That is what I'm looking for, and I had asked to get a draft of some kind of warrant article in the next few weeks, if possible.
There is, we have a number of warrant articles.
So I would support that, I understand the need to have a reserve fund, but I think we could sell that to the voters, but we've got to keep this budget down because these contracts are going to be very expensive, and we will have savings coming up as well.
All right. I understand we're putting together a budget that won't even start taking effect until next July. We're coming up with a best guess estimate. I don't like, we think we might be able to save, if everything goes okay, in some transportation and maybe in some homeless, we might be able to. That's a heck of a way to run a business. You know, I, I don't like when we're negotiating and talking about $38 million, "Well, I'm going to settle with, you know, I'll meet you halfway." You know, I, I don't know what the cuts are going to be, and I don't know where they're going to be, but I'm willing to go halfway. We don't know how much money that is, oh, yes, we do, but is that going to be enough? Well, I don't know, because maybe we're going to have an extra homeless child come in, we don't know. If you're, if we assume we're going to have one less, then we can assume we're going to have one more at about $80,000 a pop.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
No, so, I, I, I'm concerned. Bottom line, as we did this year, we gave money back to the community if we didn't spend it, and we gave them a sizable amount. I think one of the confusions that we started off with here is that the Budget Committee was using one number of $36,112, whereas the Budget Committee put together their own number. And until we got really towards the end, I didn't know where they were coming up with these reductions, because they start, we started at two different places.
Yep.
Right? So I'm going to ask the Budget Committee in the future, perhaps, and it's your committee, then maybe you start with the number the superintendent gave and then deduct the rad or whatever. And at the, give us, if you can, like at the end here, where those numbers were that you believe savings could be made, because I didn't know, other than just talking to the superintendent and a few other people, where the numbers, you know, "Oh, there's going to be two people here, we think we can save," and, you know. So I was confused, all I had was a number from you, and it took me a while to come up with where those numbers came from.
Pete, could I ask you a question?
So, well, no.
Who would you like to present that to you, that number? Because you do have a representative, and I would suggest that if you wanted that, you ask Mr. Healy.
Yeah, we're getting, yeah, okay. This is, this is his first night tonight, right? So he was going to present it, but anyway. Okay, so, the thing is, I, I, I would be comfortable with keeping the two teachers, the $26,000, I think, that we talked about, I think that's a give me. You're looking at additional $70,000, talking less than one-half of 1%. The board's going to decide, but understand, tonight, whatever vote we take, it's a tentative vote, because we haven't got the total numbers from the Budget Committee yet, so I want to reserve the right that, wait a minute, we're going to be changing our numbers maybe, because you may be changing yours.
Same token, Peter, we affirm the 35,887,933 and send that to the Budget Committee, that's the number, they will be working with it.
Yes, 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 I have no problem with that.
I think we should go from that and let's make it as clean a process.
I just want the cortisol that, depending on what number they finally come back with...
Well, they may agree with that number, we don't know that.
And then, then no problem.
I move that we affirm the proposed budget of $35,887,933.
So that's the budget with 70,000.
I'll second that.
That's cool.
Okay, that's, Ellie made that motion. Larry? Okay, we've had quite a bit of discussion, I know it's kind of backwards a little bit, any further discussion on it? Okay, all in?
I just, I just challenge us, moving forward, like I challenged a couple meetings ago, if we're going to make a cut, we understand the outcomes, and if it's got an outcome, it has a, has a, it has, it's pointing to our North Star. It's pointing towards our North Star and our organization to which is this cut impacting what that leadership team is doing to go ahead and help drive outcomes, which I've seen many of the board members here, many board members here, come in and question our curriculum. So why, long story short, every time we make a cut, there's an outcome. Every time we make a cut, there's a cost to do in business here. We should understand what that really means, and what that's doing to our North Star, and to, what are we removing from their hands and removing from that classroom? We need evidence to these discussions and not, we can just do whatever we want.
And I would agree with you, and that, that's why we sell this budget to the public and let them know what's going on.
Right, I agree, like if we, then again, we all settle in, this is our budget, we all unified, we support the budget, we support the contracts, then the community will vote in favor for. I will take a backseat to the 70, the $100,000 to assure that the community knows we're united.
By the way, Jack, the, the Budget Committee number is 35,817,933, and I just added the 70 to that number.
All right, move the motion? All in favor? Okay, that, keep your hands up, please, because I can see this too. Okay, you got those, Louis? You got Larry, Corey, Ellie, Tammy, and me? Okay, all right, opposed? Motion carries.
So we convene the Budget Committee?
So now we can go into recess. Thank you, board.
Okay.
Okay.
You're up.
Budget Committee, the School Board has come back to us with a proposal for a negotiated compromise of raising our proposed budget by $70,000. I believe you've heard the thing, could I have a motion? Yes.
Sure. I move we present a Budget Committee budget of $35,887,933.
Okay, can we have a second? Okay. Is there a discussion? Yes, Mr. Doggett.
Every penny that we add to the tax rate has an impact. It has an outcome, it has a cost. It may not be... It may not be what we all like to think, but it's the difference between certain elderly people being able to afford medication, healthy food, all sorts of impacts. Every time we add something to the budget, it has an impact. We're looking at adding, and quite honestly, at this point, percentages mean nothing. When Ellie and I were first on the Board together, the budget was little over $3 million.
Ooh, you're old.
The, a 10%,
Big show.
A 10% impact then was $300,000. Now a 10%, 10% impact would be 3.5 million. So the percentages, quite honestly, people no longer listen to because they realize that it's a percentage on a large, too large a number. What we have to do is we have to look at what the impact is. So we're looking at adding, just from the budget, approximately 50 cents per thousand to next year's tax bill.
Okay?
Yep.
That, that's actually where it, where it works out. Then you have a teacher contract, that could be another 50 cents. We have to pay attention to these details. It's lovely to think, standing at the top of an ivory tower, the problem is, is that sometimes the clouds of delusion below you obscure being able to see what's happening on the ground level. And I, I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Okay.
Budgeting is not a science. Budgeting, as I believe the School Board Chair said, it's the best professional estimate of what things will cost a year from now. None of us has a crystal ball. I appreciate that the Board, last year, when money was not spent, that they gave that money back to the taxpayers. That was honest, because they did not spend everything they had anticipated or estimated. That's how budgeting works. If we knew the exact cost, none of us would be sitting here at this table. We wouldn't have a job to do. That would be wonderful, but that's not how it works. There are professionals, our administrators, who have said, this is what we estimate the costs will be. It may be lower, it may be higher. We don't know. We do need to look at, what are the needs of the district, the basic needs? We have a problem in New Hampshire, because we do not, as a state, adequately fund education. It's not a Sandburn problem. It's a New Hampshire problem, and it's not based on what this community can pay. It's based on a definition that was made for the state. And we are going to be in big trouble in the coming years, because every community in this state is in, they're experiencing lower enrollments, and yet costs keep going higher. You want to know why that budget was so low? We had no technology those many years ago. Do you know what?
We didn't have the number of people either.
We didn't have the number of people?
We didn't have special ed requirements.
It was just coming into play, 94, PL 94142 was passed in 1979.
I was just going to say, 1979.
1979, and most people did not want their children identified then. Today, it's the reverse, because of all the support services that go along with it.
There are many things that have changed. What teachers have to do is a huge amount. So everything, there's a captive audience here of kids, and now, I hate to say it, we have to be concerned about their safety in no way we ever, ever imagined we would have to. All of those costs add up, no matter how many kids you have in the school, costs are going up. So I would, once again, ask for your support on the motion of $35,887,933.
Mary, did you have your hand up?
I did. I agree with Mrs. Gannon, and I would vote to support this compromise figure. I stated in our meeting two weeks ago that I felt we had asked for transparency, we had asked for line item details regarding support for specific costs, because we knew in the past that that kind of clarity was not evident. We have received returns of, on the surplus in the past couple of years, and we know that we're churning and making changes to the future. We're looking at a default budget of 35,618,920 and a proposed compromise of 35,887,933. That's about, I don't know, help me out somebody.
$300,000.
$270,000 difference, and the voters are going to decide. I don't want to do anything that's going to adversely impact student learning. I think we need to support the students and the teachers. My biggest concern is the employment contracts. I am assuming they've been negotiated or are being negotiated in good faith, and they're going to be fair and equitable in all those things that come into play for negotiations. I know what this district has a history of doing, and that frightens me, but I'm hoping that we can present this unified front with a reasonable number. There's not a great difference between the default and the proposed at this juncture, but ultimately, I don't know if we said it, but the voters are going to decide, so in the spirit of good faith, I agree with Mrs. Gannon's proposal, and I will support that.
Okay. Jack, did you have anything to say? Jim already did. Do you have anything to say, Cheryl?
Yep. You, you said that we were going to get some more information on some other things, so I think we should, hey, I mean, this seems fiscally responsible to do such a thing. You mentioned there were some things you wanted to change, and I'm interested in seeing that. I don't think we have to jump on board tonight. Jim's right. I know too many people that are struggling, okay? I know too many, and, you know, maybe all of you can say, well, it's just another couple hundred bucks, just another 300 bucks. If you do this, this is a million-dollar increase in the last two years, okay? You've increased your taxes and your tax burden by a million dollars in two years. That impacts people. You know, veterans, elderly people, people on pensions, we, I've hopped on this forever, and in, at least this year, there has been at least a cursory mention of the taxpayers. It's not only the taxpayers, it's the citizens, and we owe a duty to them too, that, that went before us and paid all this stuff that are now struggling. It's just how much, it's, it's not limitless because somebody wants a program, okay? It's not. And I, I just don't know what to say to these people when they ask me, what, what's going on? How, I can't afford this. What are you doing? I can tell you how many times people say that to me. I agree, and I'm going to, I want to say that again, this would be a million-dollar increase in two years. That's the track you're on, boys and girls, okay? Boom, 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 boom. Where does it ever stop? Mr. Heath's right. You give X amount of dollars, you give the best education you can for what you have, okay? That's how you run your house, and that's how you run a business. I agree with Mr. Baker and Mrs. Brown that there's, there's a lot of savings, and I can't support this kind of increase on, on, on the public. The other thing is that every year, I wish I had the figures with me, and I don't, so if I get, if I say something wrong, don't go nuts, but every year, there's been a surplus of money, and I've talked about this ever since I've been on the Budget Committee, haven't I, Annie? Every year, there's a surplus. That means there's too much money in the budget, okay? That's what a surplus is. If you're returning money, well, if you're returning money, okay, you've got too much money, okay? Now, last year, you had a million and a half dollars, too much money, so it came back. I think there's plenty of money out there, still out there, always has been out there to pay for stuff, and don't, we've mentioned this budget, tax is going to be an increase, teachers' contract, administrative contracts, and don't forget about the warrant articles that are coming too. Every one of those is going to cost money, and it's just going to, and that's not even getting, hasn't even gotten mentioned how much that potentially could cost everybody. The warrant articles, when, when Mrs. Gannon talks about budgeting, yeah, I get budgeting, but it's not just budgeting, it's, it's by, it's, it's, it's doing new stuff. So that's beyond just budgeting. You know, I hear the word cuts, and I just want to briefly start about this. Again, you know, it's a matter of semantics, but if my son wants a new car, and I don't give him the money, I haven't cut him anything, he's just not getting it. It's not a cut, because he doesn't get a new car, or he doesn't get, he doesn't get to go to Aruba. He's not, you can't, you've just cut my funding. No, I'm not going to pay for it. So stop saying it's a cut. These are all budgets, these are budget requests, these are requests to fund things, and if you don't agree with it, you don't want to fund it, you're not cutting it, you're not, you're not funding it. Cut's such a nasty word. Oh, jeez, we can't do that, because we're going to cut something, we're going to hurt the students. Well, not necessarily. Again, I'm just, I don't like where we just ended up, Annie, I don't. It's, it's, I negotiated things for 30 years, and I've heard all the language and, and how you spin things. This is, well, we'll meet in the middle. We'll meet in the middle after I add in $100,000, and then we'll meet in the middle of that. So we're not really meeting in the middle between the two figures. We're really somewhere else, so don't anybody miss that here. So I wasn't here when they set that figure. I think we ought to stay where we are. Guys talk a lot about it, and we got some more information coming in, and then, you know, we'll deal with it. That's our, that's our job, the Budget Committee sets the budget. That's all I got to say.
Larry, do you have anything to say to this?
Well, I do have one thing. We're living in a age of technology. We're not back in the steam engines anymore, we're not back in the 40s and 50s. Things are moving fast. If we don't stay up with it, our kids are going to be left behind, and then we're going to get left behind. As you said, the ones before us paid for our kids. Our job now is to pay for the next group that's coming up, then they pay for the next one. That's the way our taxes is set up, and we don't like it, none of us do, but that's the state we live in, and that's what we have to live with. We can't sit there and deprive the kids of a decent education. Like I told you before, you need to spend the money that you're going to get the dollar back. Now, is that dollar coming today or tomorrow? I don't know, but I think we need to look seriously, are we giving our children the right education for them to be successful next year when they get out of school? That's the question I keep asking. As you said, I was out there in the, in labor market. How many of these students that came out to me for a job, and I said, you're not working for me? You can't read, you can't write, and I'm working for a government that wants perfect documented records and everything? Forget it. So I'm going to go back. I think this budget that we have come up with is an open budget, it's a fair budget. Maybe there is a little bit slop in there. So we return it back next year to help the taxpayers out the following year. What's the difference? It's going to be going up every year. How long you been around? Probably like me, about 50, 60 years, right?
Hey, yeah, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, about 50.
But, but, when did you ever see taxes go down? That's my problem. I like to see, and even, how do I put it? If I spend a dollar, I get a value for that dollar spent, and then when it comes to education, that dollar spent means that that child, when he goes or she goes out in the market, can sell herself, get a, or himself, and get a job, and do the job, and keep me on Social Security so I don't have to go back to work. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments before we have a vote. One is that I agree with what you said, Mary, about the transparency and about the line item detail and that kind of thing that we've asked for. I am very excited about the direction that the district is moving in as far as giving the, I, I wish we were here today where we could have this, you know, $2.5, $3 million in potential savings out of facilities and efficiencies and be able to invest right now into the kind of stuff that would make it and, and, and save on some of the tax increases and cover future, future increases in teacher salaries. I wish we were there right now, but I am so thankful we're moving in that direction, and I want to support us moving in that direction. So I'm in favor of this budget and of moving forward with it. If the superintendent tells me that he can run this district and he can provide good education for kids, that's what we want, is good education for kids at, at prices that are as affordable as possible. They're not a freebie, it's not a free ride, it costs money, costs a lot of money, but we're a small district, and so we don't have the efficiencies of some of the large ones, and it just, it costs us to get where we're, we're going to go. Hopefully, we're going to put in some of these savings so that we can better allocate our monies going forward. So I guess that's all I have to say. Are you ready for a vote? Yes, Jack?
I just have a comment. I think the speed of, the budget of $35,887 is, I'm going to support. I think the School Board has come back, and we've already added $70,000. I think we've made some reasonable cuts, so I like to have.
Savings, savings.
I'm not the only one who said cut.
I know, no, a lot of people have. A lot of people have, but it goes to, it goes kind of, it goes to what Charlton was saying, is that, you know, it's not, it's not an expense, it's not a reduction, it's, it's just a smaller increase. Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and that would, and then opposed? So that would be, one, two, three, four, five in favor, and Mr. Doggett and Mr. Swayze opposed. And that is the end. Mary? Yes, may I have a motion to adjourn the Budget Committee meeting?
Wait a minute, we're not going, so we won't have a meeting January 3rd then?
Oh, yes, we will have a meeting January 3rd, because we have to prepare our, and we're also having one tomorrow to begin to prepare it.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, you're chairing it.
I know, that'd be cool.
Okay.
Where are your flag jackets? I might not become heckle if he's chairing.
May I have, may I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous.
Yes.
Thank you, School Board.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Budget Committee.
I have a copy of this.
Cheryl?
Yes, I do. I'll drop it off.
Okay.
Oh, you're going to yowl at me tonight?
I almost did. The only thing is, I couldn't respond enough. Hey, bye. Okay, I believe, I'm going to sit next to Ellie. It's been, it's been two hours and 10 minutes. We are 10 minutes behind. Does anyone want to take a few minutes to go to the men's ladies room? There are a few. All right, by all means, go for it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be back. We're going to, we're going to move forward, and we're going to jump over, well, we've done 6-2, okay? We're going to jump, we're going to hold on our policy review. Pam, you can start getting ready if you want, and we'll go to public comment. So if we have any public comment, you can come up to the mic, say who you are, you have three minutes. Please stay with the agenda. Now, understand, and I'm not saying don't talk, we've already made a decision, all right? So we can't be swayed by anything you might want to say in an attempt to sway us to vote a certain way or another, because we've already done it. I, I, not that I don't want you to speak, but to try to say you agree with or don't agree with, we've already made the decision. So whatever you want to say, say, don't worry about it, all right? Okay, so do we have any public, I was going to say, Tammy, you always have something. We need somebody to start.
Well, well, there's chocolate up here, so I figured if I came up there, maybe I'd get chocolate. So just a note, if anybody wants a piece of chocolate, you should come up here. So just a note, if anybody wants a piece of chocolate, you should come up here. My name's Tammy Gluck from Newton, and I'm, I, I'm glad that the school board and the Budget Committee could come to a consensus this evening. I am not a hundred percent comfortable with the figure, as I, I think that the superintendent sees it as a negotiation, and, and, you know, in any negotiation, you both sides have to give, so. The, the other point I want to make is, and Ms. Alessio made this comment a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just going to reinforce it. Passing the contracts, passing the budget, if this school board and the Budget Committee are in consensus and agreement on these things, then publicly, they need to support these. If the public hears it from the board and the Budget Committee in a unified voice, if you will, the, the community will come behind that. You know, you have community members here that come to these meetings, and they're involved, they care. We're not trying to micromanage as maybe a certain board member thinks. However, we have an opportunity to voice our opinion when we come to our meeting, this meeting here. It's our meeting as much as it's your meeting. We should have an opportunity to give our concern and input more than just once a year at the polls. The other thing I'm just going to draw your attention to this evening is there's a new, New Hampshire Department of Ed website with what they're calling I Reports. I was looking a little bit on that the other night around looking at Sanborn and Oyster River. There's a, there's a comparison that happens frequently between Sanborn and Oyster River. And two things that, that I noticed, just, I want to mention it tonight. Economically disadvantaged in Oyster River, less than ten percent. Economically disadvantaged in Sanborn, sixteen point two-six percent. Students with disabilities at Oyster River, fifteen point eight-four percent. Students with disabilities at Sanborn, twenty point five-nine percent. If you take that as a percentage of the total school populations, we have two-hundred-and-fifty more students than Oyster River that have students with disabilities. That will impact your, your cost per student when you're making those comparisons. That's all. Thank you, I'm going to have my chocolate now.
May I also know, just to piggyback on that, I called the superintendent from Oyster River, and I met with him after one of our regional meetings. Oyster River runs four buildings for two-thousand-two-hundred students. We're running five campuses for sixteen hundred.
Correct.
The difference in the number of students is over eleven million dollars in resources that Oyster River has, per pupil. Eleven million.
Wow.
No, eleven million total, when you take the per pupil of, of cost and multiply it by seven hundred students, it's significant, and, and their class sizes therefore are slightly bigger.
Right.
Because they're funding their academic intervention, they have extensive academic intervention programs.
And, and I'm confident this board is going to tackle that issue with your leadership, so.
That's the point.
Thank you.
John LeBlanc from Kingston. Just two comments related to some comments I've heard up here. One, I believe it was Mrs. Gannon who mentioned that the funding model in our state, and you know, I, I totally agree with what Mr. Swayze said, that, and Mr. Doggett, there are many people in our community who are on fixed income, and any tax increase is an awful tax increase for them. But I also want to say I agree with Mrs. Gannon that that's not our local community's fault. This is the state's fault for not properly funding all of what the state communities need, and the state is pushing down their expenditures down on the local communities and making them take responsibility for that. So I'd like to see us somehow work at a state level to get our fundings changed. I know that's not the venue to do it, but I just wanted to agree with her. Another comment that one of the board members made was about V-Lax. I had four children go through the Sanborn Regional School District, and all of them actually have taken V-Lax classes. They've mostly taken those V-Lax classes because they couldn't fit the classes that were available at the school into their schedule in order to fit AP classes in, in order to fit other programs in that they wanted to take. V-Lax is a great opportunity or a resource to allow students to augment their schedule if they can't fit it in to their daily regular schedule. I do not believe V-Lax is a good alternative to sup, like, sub out our programs, so our general education classes that we take, and try to push the kids and say, go take a V-Lax class instead of actually sitting in a classroom where they can do group work. V-Lax, you're on your own, you're working with a teacher, but you are very remote. You're not working with other students, you're not working in groups, you're not learning how to collaborate with others. It's as an alternative, not, it should not become how we save money at our schools. That is just a very strong opinion. It's not for every student either. I had kids who, my students, daughters took it, and my son has taken them. Not each of them was very successful in getting it done in the timeframe that was required, because you have freedom and you don't always fit it in how you're supposed to. So I just want to say, V-Lax is a nice option, let's not make it something to get rid of programs at our high school. Thank you.
Okay, so, this is going to be a while, Pam, how are we doing?
We have a policy J-I-C-H dash R, student substance abuse, use and abuse rules. There's some legally mandated language we had to change. I'd like to have a motion for a first and second read on this policy.
So move.
Okay, we got Larry, and then Tammy second.
And as you can see, we made some minor changes required, such as knowingly being in the presence of, instead of just being in the presence of knowingly, we added in some regulations concerning suspension for substance abuse and using diversion plans. And some additional language, I'm sure you've reviewed it. Now, you wanted the May, you wanted the, the May retained on that second page, right?
The May on the second page?
Here you go, check this out. Or did you want, I think you wanted to retain the shell, okay, so, we're going to retain the shell right here. Where it says shell, we're going to retain the shell.
Dawson, is that correct? Shell on that?
You can't see it, okay, hold on now.
He's not a falcon. Is that, is that from the Raven, and?
No, that's because I'm smart.
I was thinking of Brendan.
So the question is, shall we see a ten to twenty day suspension versus May? Now, on the prior page, we had a May, a change from shell to May, and I asked, do you want a May here as well? But I believe you wanted a shell.
Uh, I think it was shell, Bob, is what we agreed on, I checked with Brian.
Giving self-supplier, giving control.
It, it's basically saying that transmitting, selling, supplying, or giving, intending to transmit, self-supplier, give, any controlled substance, or illegal substance. Blah, 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 shall receive a ten to twenty day suspension, and then it, it's shell. It might be more than that, trust me. Yeah. Because that way, people can't argue with Bob and the team when they have to administer it, I want it to be clear.
I believe there's a portion there that says my special life.
Thank you so much.
Special life considerations are in there somewhere about that.
Yeah.
That might alter it.
Yeah, I think we're fine, because this is the one that you guys worked on a lot, and I checked in with the team before we went to this draft, but the shell was just lingering, thank you, Pam.
So, can I, we have a motion to approve, any discussion? All in favor? First and second read, thank you.
Jim, are you okay?
Yep.
Now.
One hundred percent.
That, that's unanimous.
B-E-D is, so, we have two policies for repeal. B-E-D's board meeting procedures, which is being replaced with a new B-E-D-D and B-E-D-D dash R. The second reads are below, we forgot to repeal it at our last meeting. And another one is C-B-E, SAU administrator salary policies. The School Board Association recommends we repeal this, since now we have a union for the administrators, and the few administrators who aren't governed by a union have their own contracts.
We have our own policy.
They have their own, right, and so this is no longer a required policy, it's basically obsolete.
That's correct.
So I move that we, that we peel those two mentions.
I don't know if we can do both of them, I think we might do one and then do the other, because it's separate policies. So, so. I'm not sure, so let's cover ourselves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And can I have a motion to repeal the C-B-E?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
No, no, I, I told her she can run it, that's, you know.
Does that mean that we cannot unblock?
I, I, I'm under the, look, if I find out otherwise, but I do, we do not need to go through the next twenty policies one at a time.
I am going to read the policies that we had amended at our first read, and I have introduced the changes in these policies. I'm going to read the policy and ask for a motion to approve as amended.
Each one?
No, just do the proof.
Yes, because I, I was told not to do the mind of block.
Excuse me, are these the B-B policies, the B policies?
Um, actually, the list is A-C, A-D-C. These are a block of policies that really don't require any discussion.
Okay.
And we, and the changes.
Right, so, everything in the list that says, Pete, I feel completely confident that you can say, I'd like a motion to approve on second read because we've already discussed them individually.
As change.
Policies A and B for second read, and then we can just move the whole block. I think the reason why Pete asked for an individual on the first two, Pam, was because we were repealing them and we hadn't discussed them before. These have all been read for first read.
We've covered those and discussed them.
Well, then, let me.
But I've got a question about one of those.
I have to go over a couple of things first as well, so.
Okay.
Do you want to mention which, um, policy number?
Yeah, I can find it.
Thanks.
We had one. Oh, where we, where, is, is B-G-B one of these?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Where number five on that policy was struck out. Policies may be amended by the affirmative vote of the majority of the entire board at any meeting. And we have voted to put that back in, I just want to make sure that that is put back, is, was put back in.
Pam does the edits, so I would assume so.
It's, it's, it's B-G-B.
So.
Number five.
The attorney with the School Board Association writes that he recommends that we not include retaining that because he said that it sound, although it is legal to keep that in, it sounds like we are suspending or amending all of our existing policies. And he said the concern is that at some instance, a board may be divisive, and on specific issues, they may want to manipulate policies on attendance at a specific board meeting, whether or not the policy issue was included on the agenda. He suggests that we, um.
We use B-G-B, which says emergency procedures.
He said, we have an emergency procedures, uh, policy already, and they can waive the two-meeting requirement and take immediate action. So he indicates that we should probably get rid of that because it could lend itself to abuse by selected worms.
I think that's inconsistent with B-E-D-B, where it says, every board member has the right to place items on the agenda. Matters not included in the agenda may be presented during the meeting, provided the board agrees to discuss the matter. The board may not choose not to deal with every agenda item. So, if you're worried about a divisive board because somebody's not present, well, the next meeting, they can go back and reverse it. I mean, that's kind of far out there, don't you think?
I think that what we should do with this, because of the hour and the fact that we're waiting, we have, we're paying a lawyer to wait for us. So, so I, what I would say is, why don't we move this except for B-E-D-B and B-G-B and discuss them at the next meeting? Because I want to clarify that, there's a distortion there.
No, that's one, that was one I wanted to bring up anyway, so we'll table that one, we'll table B-G-B.
And we'll just talk about it at the next meeting, Jim.
Okay, that's fine.
We don't have budget and every other thing.
Right, yep.
The, the rest of them are, were pretty benign.
What number was that you wanted to table?
B-E-D-B.
B-E-D-B.
No, B is in boy.
B-E-D is also being tabled.
B-E-D-B.
B-E-D-B.
Yes, sir.
B-E-D-B, that's what I got.
Yeah, and then the other one is B-G-B. Sound good, Jim?
Yeah.
I'll do a little homework, get back to y'all in more detail, because Will's feedback is kind of, I'm, I'm wondering myself after what you just said. I just like to know the answer. What we want to do is promote transparency.
And again, that's in a, one, one lawyer's opinion, that doesn't mean that's right for this board.
Right, right, and he's saying that it's legal to keep that in there.
Right, right.
That's why I flagged it in my notes.
You should take another look at it.
Yeah, let's do that. I might run it by another lawyer, too.
So, A-C-A-A, we added a, I, well, I added a reference to what a day means, all references.
Today, days, or?
For twenty-four hours, so it means school days unless other, otherwise specified for the purposes of this policy.
And that was per Will. Will, Will said that, call it a school day unless it says otherwise. Because then it gets us out of the conundrum of like, the last day of school being June twenty-first, and the next day being September first, and.
It does mention calendar date, but he said, school days should cover most cases. The other change that we added since our last meeting was to, the one after that, A-C-A dash R, sexual harassment. Jody Guderman, Ms. Guderman asked that we add a third-party signature to this in case a third party is reporting a, um, a claim. So we added that to the very end. That was the only, only other change since our last meeting. And for B-B-A, Mr. Heath would like to, you may want to table this one as well, would like to amend the language that Mr. Baker had proposed to have twice, meetings twice a month except for July and August, and return to the state language, which says, the minimum it will hold is, uh, a meeting at least once in every two months.
And that's for the law of the arts, how you're going to provide a state.
So it's not saying we cannot have two, we, we, we can't have two meetings, but we should state the minimum required for our policy.
We've already, we've already voted on a minimum of, of two meetings a month.
Yeah, and I think that what the discussion, the discussion was, to plan to hold two meetings a month, but not to make it so hard that if we had a snow day or something and we couldn't fit it in, that we'd be a mess.
Right, but that's, that's a, if you don't, if you have a snow day, everything shuts down, school shuts down. You don't have to have that in your mind.
Let's just table this one and do it at the next meeting. We're all, we've got a big night ahead of us.
Okay, we're tabling B-B-A.
B-B-A.
Yep.
B-B-A.
Yep, thanks, guys.
And the only other change since our last meeting was B-E-D-G dash R, access to minutes. We have the charge for coffee to twenty-five cents a coffee.
For your question.
Okay.
Yeah, I checked that one out.
What is it, it's going to be what?
Twenty-five cents.
Okay, but what about the idea of people using their own recording devices at no charge?
I thought we said that was okay.
The policy's silent on that, so, so it's fine.
Oh, it doesn't say.
It doesn't say you can't do.
You want to take your own pictures.
I'm not going to, that'd be kind of like, you know.
No, cost points.
Remember, less is more sometimes. There might be some times where you might, anyway, I, I would, I'm comfortable with this, Jim.
All right.
So, we're, I'd like a motion to approve following the second read as amended. A-C, A-D-C, C-A, B-B-A-A, B-B-A-B, I feel like I'm doing an I chart. B-B-B-C, B-B-B-F, B-D-A, B-D-C, B-D-G, B-E-C, B-E-D-D, B-E-D-D dash R, B-E-D-A, B-D-C, B-D-G, B-E-D, B-E-D-H, B-F-E, B-I-A, A-C-A-A, A-C-A-A dash R, and B-E-D-G dash R.
So move.
Second.
What was the third one you read?
Did you have your last five now? Last five.
Phil has a copy of this.
All right.
Okay, you got a, you got a motion? Wait, wait, who was, you got the motions?
Yeah, she's got it.
Okay, that's your. Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
I'm working right before then we're gonna talk about it.
You did a great job on this so far.
Yes.
Out of the movement. Not too many people could have kept it together like that, good job.
Okay, I think we're up to second comment, which is nobody here.
We've got some first reads here, are these all set?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
I'm trying to get us out of here, Elliot, really.
I know you are.
So, we have a couple of C policies. C B, school superintendent. Um.
Yeah. Okay, I'm still on. I didn't say that, we're gonna edit that out, thank you very much. Larry, are you audio taping us, too?
Of course.
Alright, first read for C B, school superintendent?
Yep.
So did y'all have a chance to read this one?
Yep.
Is, do we need, we probably need to discuss this, don't we? Let's do it at the next meeting.
I'm looking forward, I have a long document here, hold on.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm saying the school superintendent one.
This retains our long list of superintendent duties. Um, we could keep it or shorten it, using this School Board Association's sample policy. It's the board's choice. We're really doing some homework for parents and readers of our policy manual. We could just direct them to the RSA, which lists the pol, the duties of the superintendent, or we can insert a list in our own policy. Um, they recommend we go with the short version, because if things change, then we're covered. But if you want to keep the long list as a convenience to, to, you know, stakeholders, it's really up to you.
Yeah, let me add one more thing to that. The law for this one has changed just in the last three months.
Yeah, it changes the law.
And, uh, I would recommend we use the short form, because of the continuous change that will keep us up to date with the procedure.
If we just repeal it altogether, don't we just default to state?
No, you gotta have the, because it's a law.
It is a law.
So we gotta have the short version to reference the RSA.
So, I'd like to move that we accept the short version, but we can wait till the second read for you to weigh in again. We also have C C B, line and staff relations. Um, a small change was made to that policy, to note that public officials, such as the clerk and treasurer and auditor, are not considered employees, and they report to the board. So that was a very small change to that one. And C F, school boarding, the school building administration, it retains a very long list of school building administrator duties. Um, we could shorten it and use the School Board Association's sample, again, it's your choice, for the same reasons as before. Um, and then lastly, B G F. This is a new policy, suspension of policies. So, apparently, we can suspend our policies by unanimous vote, um, at a meeting. And, they recommend that we adopt this policy. I, it's not in our current policy manual, it's just recommended by the School Board Association. It would supplant B G B, which we've already tabled, so we'll discuss those together at our next meeting. Those are something we tabled. So that's my first read of those. Any questions, or?
Motion?
Motion to accept for, as first read.
So move.
Second.
Larry and Corey?
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, Pam, and, and Phyllis and Bob Dawson, they have really, and, and a bunch of other people at the central office. They are, you wait to see the Jays. This is the warm-up round to practice this process. The Jays are the student policies, and they're big.
Obviously, there's no second comment. There's no new business, by the way, folks. And, um, there's no, okay, other business, um, Phyllis, I have tabled B E D B, B G B, B B A. I think that's all of them. The second read for those, did we just finish? The New Hampshire School Board Association delegate. There was one other right at the beginning, uh, did it have to do with middle school, calling it the middle school? No, what was it?
N H S B A delegate assembly.
I thought that one went just before that.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'll remember, I watched the video.
Okay, you, you got what I got? Okay, as far as I know, that's it. I won't come up with other things for sure.
Okay.
Our next meeting is to be held on ninth.
What was the third?
We decided not to do that, because there wasn't enough time to prepare the agenda and get ready for the meeting, because, but the, the holiday is the, ends on, I mean, it takes us three days to get ready for this.
Okay, so, announcements. The next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, January ninth, twenty nineteen, from six to nine P M. at the library at Sanborn Regional High School. The Budget Committee Public Hearing will be held on Thursday, January tenth, twenty nineteen, at seven P M. in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. Snow date is Friday, January eleventh, twenty nineteen. Okay, I, how about a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Going to non-public, and we check, we, you, you checked those, these are the right ones, right?
Phyllis, we're all set, right? With the non-public letters.
Because we're gonna do contracts this time, so we wanted to make sure we had the right three, colon, C and D.
C and D, yeah, I thought so, yeah.
You want, excuse me, you want to recess the meeting and be in a non-meeting to talk about the contract?
Well, we were gonna go non-public.
No, you want to recess the meeting and be in a non-meeting. Then you reconvene the meeting and vote on the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to be in non-public.
No, that's fine, the motion is what he said.
To recess the meeting and enter into a non-meeting.
Yeah.
All in favor of recessing the meeting? Alright, okay, that's unanimous.